This regular meeting of Littleton City Council to order on April 18th. City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Schlatter.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ryden.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Barr.
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Councilmember Milliman.
Here.
Councilmember Valdez. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thanks. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, council. Everyone's had a chance to review the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Seen no changes. It's proof of objection. Item four, it's time for comments and reports. I'm going to turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. I want to, just a couple announcements tonight. First of all, at the end of last week, for several days, our Economic Development Department, along with an individual or two from our Community Development Department and State Manager's Office, attended the Downtown Colorado Inc. Conference in Loveland. And that conference is focused on downtown development, especially in assisting and highlighting the work of downtown development authorities. And our staff went to kind of understand how we can best support our DDA and continue partnering to help good things happen. All that to say, at the end of the conference, there was an awards ceremony, and we knew that Littleton had been nominated for a couple of awards. And I'm very pleased to let the council and the public know that Littleton was awarded the 2023 Downtown Excellence Award for the Best Event for the Littleton Twilight Criterion. So, and I can say that there were lots of questions just from the audience about when that event is, because people want to come see it. So it was really, really well received. It's a kind of a unique prize. I've heard it compared to a couple of things, but it's really nice.
Looks like my grandma's candy dish?
Yes, that's, so if anyone would like to see it, it'll be here for a look later. Second thing, Mayor, I'm also pleased to introduce our deputy city manager, Mike Gent, who started with us yesterday. I know that I've, that the council's heard Mike's background before. He comes to us directly from, from the city of Surprise, Arizona, where he'd worked for more than a decade on a wide portfolio of services and working on systems with a lot of experience that will lend itself well to his work here in Littleton. Mike will be taking on a handful of city departments to directly support and lead through some great opportunities and some things that are happening in those departments, as also, also to help take the lead on a couple of major projects for us, like the ERP project, working closely with our IT department, finance and HR mostly. So I would just like to recognize Mike, and I took the Liberty Mayor of just a-
He can come up to the mic here.
Couple seconds, yeah. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, I'm just so excited to be here. It's been a pleasure meeting so many of your team and a few of the members of the community. I look forward to getting to know many more in the days and weeks and months, hopefully many years to come. I, this is a special place, and it's easy to recognize that, and I'm just glad to be a part of it. Thanks.
Great, thanks. Glad to have you aboard.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. City Attorney?
No report, thank you.
Alright, we'll start with Councilmember Driscoll.
No report.
Councilmember Milliman?
Hi, just a couple of quick updates. Sorry. South Metro Housing Options, looks like they're going to come in front of council here pretty soon to give us a general update. No date yet scheduled. There's a new member that has joined, and super excited. He was very engaged in the first meeting last, a couple Thursday's ago. I'm so very excited to have Merrill join the team. Overlook is really progressing well, so far it's on schedule. If you haven't driven past there recently, you should just drive by there. It is very, very cool, and I'm so excited that we had that opportunity to build that. There's no SMHO board meeting in May, as several of the folks and leadership are going to be in an affordable housing conference. The mural, I'm shifting gears now to the art world. The mural on the south side of Town Hall Art Center is finished. There's going to be a dedication ceremony on May 4th. I haven't seen it, I've just seen a picture of it, but I hear it's very, very cool. Please go and see it. It's going to be such a great addition to the downtown, downtown arts center series, or center. And speaking of the arts, myself and a couple folks from Littleton Arts and Culture Commission went to see the Littleton Youth Ballet. They performed Snow White. Unfortunately, it's at the Lone Tree Art Center. It's kind of sad that we don't have an arts and culture center here to accommodate that large of a group, because I will tell you, if you've never, if you've never seen the Littleton Youth Ballet, please go and see them. It is absolute, it will blow your mind how incredibly professional those ballet dancers are. And I'm really hopeful that one day Littleton will get an arts and cultures center. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Valdez?
No report.
Councilmember Barr?
Yeah, a couple of quick reports. First off, I'm going to be holding another quarterly, I guess I don't even know if it's quarterly anymore, community meeting. That's open to folks in my district and the public at large. So that's going to be May 27th at 10:00 a.m. in the downstairs meeting room at the Bemis Library. I don't have an agenda for it yet, but it'll probably be pertinent to whatever we have upcoming in study sessions and, and front of council business. So mark your calendar, May 27th, and that's a Saturday. We had the kickoff, the inaugural Environmental Stewardship Committee meeting this month. It was fantastic to see all those members come out. You know, it was a really thoughtful and wide-ranging discussion, but essentially, you know, they are looking, they have elected a chairman. It was actually a former council member, Scott, former Mayor Protem, Scott Mellon, who will actually be chairing the Environmental Stewardship Committee. And we're going to start putting together how to essentially compile a work plan and agenda for that committee in the coming years. So it's, like I said, a really engaging group of folks. Next Generation Advisory Committee also met. While we did not have quorum, we are hopefully actually going to attain that in the upcoming NGAC meeting, but we laid out what council discussed as some possible areas of work this coming year, and the group seemed amenable to it. So I think in this upcoming meeting, we'll be able to figure out which action items are going to be going first in front of the NGAC. Finally, I want to say, Dr. Cog had it, the regular meeting is going to be tomorrow, and I'll report out on that in a following council meeting. We did have a special work-study session earlier in the month. Two components of that, one was for the members of Dr. Cog to take a position on SB 213, which they did vote to take an opposition position to Senate Bill 213. So I just wanted to report out on that. Secondly, the EPA for this region presented on the climate pollution reduction grant that is being funded out of the Inflation Reduction Act. Dr. Cog will likely be the lead agency, and will be looking for municipalities to participate in these first kind of upcoming study and planning sessions, to essentially unlock further funding years down the road. So it's an exciting activity to embark on. It's far-reaching in terms of what its goals are and how we'll achieve it, but Dr. Cog is, you know, going to handle it, and it's in good hands. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. Councilmember Grove?
Yes. We had our citizen meeting on April 8th at the Bemis Library, and great turnout. The room was full, and what we did is the citizens came in and kind of wrote topics they were interested in talking about, and then we just went through them and had a discussion on each one, as well as discussion on other topics. Some of the things of interest is, might not be a surprise, it was development and SB 213. Additional things of interest to the citizens was noise, our appeal process for boards and commissions, net zero energy building codes, the street paving schedule, potholes, Jackass Hill, what's going on there with the development, the DDA, and the city ditch. And as many of you know, the city ditch is water for Inglewood, but it runs through our town, and there's going to be some changes as they move towards piping it. And there's going to be an open house first in Inglewood at the end of this month, and then here in Littleton the first week in May. And I can't remember exact date, it's either the 2nd or the 4th, and it's 4 to 6, I think. Do you remember?
I believe it's May 3rd.
May 3rd, okay, forget it.
At 4 o'clock.
4 o'clock.
Here in this room.
And then you'll see various options on what they're presenting. And there is a contingent of citizens who are very interested in preserving the history of the city ditch, and of course, everybody has to balance that with the cost. So that's what's going on there. Another fun thing, for those of you that bike and hike along the South Platte River, Nixon's is now open, and that's a fun place to go and stop when you're riding your bike or hiking, the coffee shop there on the weekends, and it's right behind Hudson Garden. So I just wanted to mention that to everyone.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yes, I want to jump on what Councilmember Milliman was saying about all the wonderful culture and artistic things in our community. That mural that's on the back of Town Hall is absolutely amazing, so drive by it. I saw it, and it was really cool. And the Littleton Ballet, you know, has offered their wall as well for one of those murals, which, like you said, could be so cool. Yeah. And of course, mural tours are going on and happening. They're not too expensive, and those are for the next two months. Voices West, they're going to be performing on April 29th, and the Littleton Symphony will be performing on May 19th. The Tri-Cities Homelessness Policy Work Group, which I am the liaison to that coalition of folks, the website, so Tri-Cities is going to launch a website with resources, with information about our community. It's also going to include a dashboard. So for folks on the city council who are really, and in our community who want to know, well, really, what are we doing? What are the numbers of the people who are unhoused? The folks who are getting into housing, how can we track that? And so the dashboard will be public. It won't have client names or patient names or anything like that, but it will show the numbers of what we're doing, and all of the amazing nonprofits that we have who are working with our unhoused folks and those encounters. So we can see those numbers in real time. So that's launching probably by the end of this month, and when that launches, we will send that out to everybody on our council. I also had the privilege of meeting with the Optimist Club. They meet every week, this is such commitment, at 7:00 in the morning over right next to Atlas Cafe, right off of Broadway. And they just do so much to support our youth, our high school students. And they have Navy shirts, they all match, they have their name on it. I mean, talk about an amazing commitment. So they're recruiting for folks to join, and this is, you know, volunteer month, so consider them. You can check them out at optimistcluboflittleton.org. And then Mayor Schlatter and I will be co-hosting a community meeting, just like our fellow council members here. Ours will be on Saturday, May 6th. It's going to be outdoors at Reynolds Landing. So put that on your calendars. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of things from me. First, it's past Sunday, I participated in the second Littleton Social Cycle event. I met at Stern Park, and this was a, about an eight-mile bike ride, all the way down to where Highline Cross, Highline Canal meets the Dry Creek Ditch there, over by the kind of the BMX bikes there. It was great. There were about 30 people this time. So if you're interested in joining that, I believe they have a Facebook page and Instagram. You can figure out when they're going to do the next one. I haven't seen that. I think they're trying to do two a month through the spring and summer season here. So that's the Littleton Social Cycle. Last night, I attended another community meeting over in Cherry Hills Village with the mayor from Cherry Hills Village, Mayor Sheridan, Mayor of Greenwood Village, Councilmember from Centennial, and then Senator Bridges and Senator Colker. Talking about 213 to hear from the community. There were mostly members, residents from Cherry Hills Village, but there were people from Littleton, Inglewood, Aurora, Denver, all that had attended. So it was interesting to hear various perspectives on 213, which they're in committee right now talking about. Tomorrow is the LPD Awards Ceremony here at Littleton, which was unfortunately interrupted back in February by the swatting incidences that swept through our state. So I'm sure our officers are looking forward to that tomorrow. Should be a good, good celebration there. Reminder to council, that Friday morning, we have our breakfast with Littleton Public Schools here in the council chambers. And then for council, for staff, and for the community in general, coming up at the end of April, I believe it's April 26th to 28th, is the Cities Summit of the Americas. It's an international conference all about cities, getting cities together. It'll be downtown Denver. There'll be hundreds of people there. It's, the agenda recently posted, and it looks quite amazing. They're going to have main general sessions. They have tracks that are specific to an energy track, a digital track, mobility transportation track, migration track, housing and safety track. I think there were a few others. So it's, it's quite a bit of information that'll be shared, and I'll be attending as many of those things as I can get to. And that's all I have. If I can get my mouse to work here. Alright. Item five on the agenda is scheduled appearances. We have one scheduled appearance tonight. We have Micah Harrison from the Life Center is coming to speak to us.
Thank you. Good evening. So I work over at the Life Center, really close to you guys, and we love Littleton. It's a great city. And we really are focused on working with low-income individuals in Littleton, and also specifically focusing on the unhoused individuals as well. So the Life Center was started by Mission Hills Church about seven years ago, and is run by Mission Hills Church, but it's a community center that really just focuses on all of Littleton. We really want to serve them. These are the programs that we do, and I just want to talk through them so that you guys are aware exactly what we do, and also just to get the message out. So one of the things that we're actually going to start at the end, because I'm just a little crazy that way. So we're going to start with training. We do a lot of training. It's really amazing how many people just don't understand how to work with or work alongside any sort of unhoused individual. There's a lot of fear that goes along with trying to help anyone who is either experiencing homelessness, or is also just experiencing any sort of low-income situation. There's just a ton of fear around that, and our goal is to really focus and make sure that there isn't fear that all of our programming, whether it's churches, communities, governments, whatever the programming, that the programming is one that's not based out of fear, but instead understands the culture of homelessness. We tackle unhoused individuals and homeless individuals in the way of just understanding them. What we want to do is we want to make sure that people are understanding that there is a different culture, both with homeless individuals, but also anyone from any income bracket. We all bring our own culture when we come to the table. So we want to make sure that that culture is just talked about, and that we, we at least address it from that standpoint. That way, it's not addressing those who are unhoused as a problem to be fixed. Instead, I'm addressing them from their own culture and understanding them better. We also have some adult education, so this is our GED and ESL class. Really, there's these two things simply because those two classes can help you get better pay at work. It's really simple. But we also just want to make sure that people, when they're going to their jobs, and they either want to, they want to up their pay just a little bit, that we can help out with that. So that's why we have our adult education. We run a food bank. It's been running for about 30 years. It was over right off of Orchard, and then it moved down to Mission Hills Church, and then when the Life Center started, it came up to the Life Center. And we've been running it for about 30 years. We serve, our current record week was 100, sorry, 1,393 individuals that were served one week out of our food bank. It's just an incredible, incredible thing that runs. We rely both on some of the grocery stores around, and we help take expired foods from those grocery stores, and then give them a second life. And then we also rely on the donations of our amazing community in Littleton. And they just constantly donate to us so that we're able to get that food out as well. We have a program called our Resource Co-op. This program is actually a newer program that just started, and we're currently forming it right now. The goal with Resource Co-op is that we don't want anyone to fall through the cracks. There are so many resources in Littleton, and it's absolutely incredible. But there's always guidelines within, expectations on each of those, and we don't want someone who needs help to not be able to get help just because they don't meet all of the expectations for specific programming. For example, I don't know of, it's possible, but I don't know of a program that works to help seniors with plumbing. And so we want to make sure that if there's a, if there's some seniors out there who are experiencing a need with plumbing, and there may not be a program that's out there suited for them, that we are gathering a bunch of people with random skill sets, and that we can go ahead and send those people out into the community, and they can help for those people who are falling between the cracks on the resources. We do have a shower and laundry on-site. This one was absolutely incredible. It started, I think, a year ago, and there's just not very many locations where our unhoused individuals are able to take a shower and do their laundry. And it is, I remember the first person who came out of the shower, the smile on his face was just absolutely incredible, because there is so much dignity that is given to people when we just feel good because we've taken a long, hot shower. And then we also offer laundry as well, because there's honestly not very many places that our unhoused clients are able to do that consistently. We have a coffee break program. This program is actually, it seems weird to call it a program, because we just offer coffee, but our goal behind it is that we want to help our unhoused individuals who have a different culture, understand the etiquette of when they're walking into different businesses in the area, what they should do, what's appropriate, and how long they should stay there. A lot of businesses in Littleton, I'm sure you've heard, are feeling frustrated at unhoused individuals. And really, what we see it as, is a culture clash between just the two cultures coming together, where an unhoused individual will stay in, with their culture, will generally feel that they are allowed to stay anywhere until they're asked to leave. Where a lot of our business owners are feeling like someone shouldn't come into their place of business unless they have a reason to be there. And so when that culture clash comes together, a lot of times, there's not communication. And so we're helping our unhoused individuals. They're allowed to stay for 15 minutes with our coffee break program. They're allowed to come in, charge their phones, lock them away. They're allowed to, we're going to install a locker system here pretty soon, use their locker system, get mail sent to the Life Center, pick it up at that time, use the restroom, grab a snack, just sit down from the sun or the snow for 15 minutes, and then after that 15 minutes, they're asked to leave. And our goal with that is just to help that transition, so that when the business owners in the area ask the same thing, they ask them to leave after a short period of time, that that's respected and understood. Resource navigating is a program that we've been running since the Life Center has opened, and it's really just a program with the goal of helping everyone understand that survival mentality is just a different type of mentality. So this is focused, again, on our unhoused individuals in the area. And we want to walk alongside them as they navigate so many resources. There are a lot of resources, but all of them have different rules, and it gets confusing. And honestly, the rules change quite often. And so we want to walk alongside someone so that if they are rejected from one program, that they, we can help them find another program that works for them, so that they don't have to do all of the research by themselves without anyone walking alongside. Really, our goal is just to walk alongside people. We want to set really short-term goals with them in this program, that we're really asking them to do one or two steps, so that they can go out, check out different programs that work for them. And the whole program is built around helping people become more sustainable. We also have our Work to Earn program. This one is my favorite program that we run. It's a program that understands that absolutely everyone has something of value to bring. And so we leave things undone around the Life Center, and as, then we ask our unhoused clients to come and help us run the Life Center, do different things, whether it's taking out trash, whether it's helping us with our garden on-site, or different things like that. We want to ask them to help us run the Life Center together. But then they're able to take those hours that they've, they've helped us, and they're able to turn them in for different things. There's a lot of, a lot of different government agencies, but also different churches and different ministries really want to not build a dependency, but they haven't quite figured out how to not build a dependency when they're working with unhoused individuals. And so our solution for that is that we want to put expectation on the individual that we are serving. Expectations are really healthy. They're expect, I have expectations on my life, you all do as well. And they're just a really healthy thing. And so that expectation then works against the dependency building. So a lot of things we don't offer for free at the Life Center. You're asked to work a certain amount of hours. It's, for example, it's three hours to get a really, really nice new sleeping bag. And so you're asked to work some hours, and then you can turn those hours in for different items that are helpful. That menu that they can order off of was- That menu that they can order off of was actually, I attempted to build it and learned that I don't know enough about homeless culture, and it was thrown entirely out and rebuilt by all of our clients. And then they were able to tell us exactly what would be helpful for them in order to help them work towards sustainability. So that's a little bit of our programming and a little bit of what we do. Again, we work with the community a lot. A lot of our goal is, is that training piece and everything that we do at the Life Center. We want to make sure that people come and understand each other. If we, if we have no understanding of each other, there's really not a way that we can move forward together. So I would love to answer any questions about what we do, but that's a little about the Life Center.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Mayor Tim?
Thank you so much for taking time to come here today and to tell us a little bit about the Life Center. You know, how would you respond maybe to some of our community members who say, hey, I'm all for helping those who want help, but the people who I see on the street, on Broadway, on Bowls, clearly, they don't want help?
Yeah, it's a really good question. And honestly, I was one of those people before I started working at the Life Center. There is so much that I didn't understand about the whirlwind of homelessness. It's incredible when you don't even have a place to stay for the night, how your world changes. So for example, with that person who is standing on the street corner, let's say they woke up that morning and they decided, I'm going to make steps towards sustainability. Because of course, that's the verbiage that everyone will use. And they start making those steps, they're going to work towards some goal, let's say a job. They're not going to be dressed in a way that any employer will likely look at them and give them the job. And so they're going to start walking around and just checking to see if there's a job that they can work towards. And then while they're doing that, they're walking everywhere. They're also having to keep track of what they're, where the food is that they're going to get for the day. And then they're going to honestly be harassed by quite a few people in the community as well, and they have to maintain good spirits through that. And then while they're working towards this, no matter how they end their day, they will be breaking the law that night because they are going to have to find a place to sleep, and they're not allowed to sleep anywhere. And so they will start working towards that. And then hopefully, while they're sleeping, their stuff doesn't get stolen, their ID that they were going to use to apply for the job doesn't get stolen. And if it does, then they have to start the morning, another step back. So it's, there's so much of a whirlwind that I didn't understand. And honestly, the people who I work with are not people who are not looking to work towards sustainability. The majority of the people that I work with are people who desire deeply to be out of their situation, but they have so many things stacked against them. And even though there are resources, the resources often don't work together in a way that makes it easy for someone to get out of the situation. Not only that, truly, the way that you think in survival mentality changes while you're on the streets. So you're then having to adjust between the, the culture of being on the streets and then the culture of being a person in the house. A lot of times, what our unhoused clients have said is when they do receive a place to sleep for the night, they won't even sleep in the bed. A lot of times, they'll sleep on the floor or sleep outside the house just because they're just not used to it. And that's a thing that I just didn't understand before. So there's a lot more to, to it than just go get a job, which is usually what people that I talk to say, just go get a job and it'll be fine. There's so many more steps to it. And it's not two easy steps, it's 5,000 really difficult steps. And so we work with that. It's something we actively work with, but honestly, even if you're consciously and actively working towards it, it takes so much longer than you think.
Councilman Millman?
Thank you so much for your presentation tonight. Besides monetary donations or even food to the food bank, do you, do you need volunteers from our community members?
Yeah, definitely. We love when people come along, and even if it's one or two times, the ability to work alongside someone in our Work to Earn program or to help someone in our food bank takes down that fear factor that I think is so important in working alongside each other to help people get out of the situation. So yes.
And that's accessible on your website?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. LifeCenterLittleton.org.
Thanks.
Councilman Grove?
Yes, a couple of questions. Very interesting programs.
Thank you.
How many clients do you think you serve now? And what is your capacity as more people become aware of these programs?
Good question. Are we talking about unhoused specifically, or are we talking about all of our programming?
Both.
Okay. With all of our programming, we probably serve, like through our food bank, we serve a bunch of families. So the individuals within that family that are served, we would count it probably at about 1,500 that are served through the Life Center, either the family through the food bank or in some way through another program. For our unhoused individuals, we see probably 100, that is a very hard number to track, but around 100, 125, maybe 150 on a monthly basis. Yeah.
And do you have capacity for, to take more in that program?
Yeah. Yeah, we do.
Have you done anything in terms of working with the city on our program with our navigator and working with Sheridan and Inglewood? I mean, these are just such great programs.
Oh, yeah. Our resource navigation uses every program in the area.
Wonderful.
And yeah, so we, we are constantly reaching out to either Littleton programs or EPO programs, all of them. And also just some church programs in the area or nonprofits. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you so much. Thanks for coming down, and thank you for everything that you in the Life Center do.
Thank you.
All right. Next up on the agenda is six proclamations. We have one proclamation tonight. It's a proclamation of the Littleton, City of Littleton. Missed it there. Proclaiming April 28th, 2023 Arbor Day in the City of Littleton. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas the City of Littleton is celebrating its 36th year of being recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways, now therefore I, Kyle Schlechter, Mayor of the City of Littleton, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2023 as Arbor Day in the City of Littleton, and urge all citizens to reaffirm to support and protect our trees and woodlands and to support our city's urban forestry program. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. All right. So yeah, so I need, I need a gavel here. All right.
I can make that happen.
Yeah, I need a gavel. All right. Next up on the agenda, item seven is public comment. Public comment is a time for members of our community to come speak to city council about concerns, issues, compliments they may have regarding city issues or items on tonight's agenda, consent agenda or general business. We do have two ordinances on second reading that we'll have public hearings tonight. So if you're here to speak to either of those issues, please wait for the public comment portion of that agenda item. If you wish to address city council during this time, please sign in on the speaker form before the meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. I will notify you when you're, I've reached your allotted time. I ask all members of the audience to please be respectful and remain silent while others are speaking. City council is not authorized by the color open meeting laws to discuss, comment, or take action at the meeting on any issue raised by a public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. I may refer matters to the city manager or city attorney for immediate comment or to staff to obtain additional information to report back to council. I will call those who have signed up to come on down one at a time. Please introduce yourself with your name and address. If you haven't signed up, we'll have time after. First up, we have Lynn Christensen.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Lynn Christensen from District Three. I wanted to share my thoughts and some comments that others have made at last week's Lumen Neighborhood Meeting concerning public notifications. You've already heard from residents who objected to the 30-minute Zoom meetings conducted by Garrity Group. Residents have also shared that less than 300 notices went, were sent concerning the Evergreen proposal because of the 700-foot notification requirement. It was also shared that quite a few postcards came back undeliverable for most of the neighborhood meetings. I understand there has been some discussion about how to better communicate these meetings, including notifying HOAs and in the Littleton Online Report. If neighborhood meetings are the primary way to be involved in development proposals, then it is the city's responsibility to make sure they facilitate the process. The proposed large-scale developments not only impact residents and businesses nearby, but also all those traveling to and through those areas. So my question is, are there going to be any future study sessions and proposed amendments to neighborhood meeting notifications in the near future? Secondly, according to the language in Colorado ruling 106 concerning appeals, quote, "From a legal perspective, zoning requirements fall under a local government's power to regulate the behavior within its own territory and the exercise of that power by counties and municipalities, and it has been deemed a legitimate and constitutional exercise of that power," unquote. The Colorado Municipal League's comments summarize the concerns while opposing SB 23213, and I encourage you to support the resolution expressing city council's opposition to the proposed legislation. With the proposed state land use legis, legislation under consideration, I'm wondering if it is wise to enact the appeal process amendments at this time because they limit the ability of citizens to appeal a development decision. Two, the criteria for amending the ULUC are to address changing conditions and meet community needs, but I'll speak more on that later. And since I have some more time, I do have some good news. I found out today that our Sinkhole and Littleton Village, they will be starting construction on Monday. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Lynn. Next up, Karen Talntire?
Hello. This is about overthinking. I believe we have a major problem with overthinking elections. We are sending hundreds of thousands of dollars to the county for election machines, which only have one job. Yes, that's in, you had only one job. That job is counting and occasionally adding numbers. You don't even need an adding machine, just a counter. The most basic calculator has more functionality than you need for an election. If you think about it, there's no reason to ever subtract anything in an election. There's no need to multiply or divide because all votes have the value of one. That's what equal representation means. Here is an abacus for learning math. You could count up to 20,000 votes on this. A precinct ranges from a few hundred to a few thousand voters. This is all the election machine you need, which will tabulate the results for one candidate in a precinct. I say precinct because ballots should be returned at the most local level where you know the people, who the people are, and it is neighbors watching neighbors. I would actually suggest something even simpler and more transparent than an abacus, tally marks on a piece of paper. Because you could sort of slide beads around on this, but you can't erase the ink tally marks. Let's have a camera overhead live streaming. Let's play the video the next day at the school for that precinct. Let's see if the adults or the students count better. The students get counting practice and a civics lesson at the same time. Then all you have to take to the next level are numbers. It's a whole lot easier to keep a chain of custody on numbers than ballots. Precinct 154 can send the city 314 votes for this candidate, 723 votes for that candidate, and the city puts the numbers on a board, and everyone in the precinct can see that the number of votes they saw counted is the number the city recorded. And they can see that that adds correctly to the totals from the other precincts, and so on up to the county and so on. You've probably had safer, more secure, and more transparent elections for a student council in sixth grade because everything was done in front of everybody at a level anybody can understand. If you want to talk to me about derivatives and integrals and eigens functions, I'll be happy to have that discussion with you. But the only math you need for elections is counting and a bit of addition. Everything else adds to the confusion, and we have to ask, who is it, who wants us confused? Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next up, Don Brunz.
You're going to wake up my computer. Okay, so you're there. When you're ready to move forward, just use your hero key. The end of seven down arrow. Either of those. Okay. Move you forward, okay? Thanks. Okay, let me use your time.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Schlechter. Thank you very much, Colleen. And city manager, Mecklenburg. Main Street tree removal of diseased trees last week's council study session is of much interest. Of course, the planned removal of diseased and dying trees is necessary to maintain sidewalk safety, yet staff's recommendation to disallow immediate replacement due to anticipated DM SIP project might be more consequential than its analysis indicated. Is it possible that staff's analysis is inadequate or incomplete? Alternatives that would avoid the adverse effects of removing Main Street trees should be explored, especially their immediate replacement. Heat, I got three reasons. Removal of 70% of Main Street's tree canopy will make Main Street appear naked, and chainsawed stumps cannot be expected how much, if at all. When people actually see, feel, and hear the barren results, pardon me, both residents and merchants will be alarmed. Merchants want people to linger downtown, and Littleton's Main Street canopy aesthetics make people want to do that. Otherwise, why come downtown to bake in both the radiant and convective heat, neither one effectively addressed by man-made structures? I noticed that EPA reports that evap or transpiration alone in combination with shade can reduce summer peak temperatures up to nine degrees, and shaded surfaces can be 20 to 45 degrees cooler than surface peak. Second holiday, if planned removal of this much canopy occurs absent its immediate replacement with new vigorous stock, where will Littleton's iconic winter season Main Street lights go? There's no substitute for their soft ambient light beneath the canopy. People love to linger on the sidewalk where the lights are pretty. Petula Clark's downtown song years ago wasn't wrong. Because merchants especially want more people downtown during the holidays, what would be left to differentiate Littleton from the rest? And I'll say of the municipalities in the area, here's where economy and environment coalesce, and it's what gives ecotourism its double meaning. Can we get it? Do we get it? But will we do it? Home, did you know that Littleton is still recognized as a Tree City USA by the Arbor Foundation IAC that Mayor Schlechter noted, we've been there for 35 years? We moved here for the trees, but we're not alone. Staff acknowledge that Main Street's trees are a major attraction for Littleton visitors. Arbor Day Foundation's requirements are the four you see there. Do we still meet those overarching requirements? There's still time to do this. Do more than just resolve, but actually celebrate Arbor Day. Why not demonstrate our commitment to Tree City USA status where it's most visible on Main Street? And you see there, some of the other advantages of having Main Street trees.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you very much, and I'm always amazed at how fast time goes. Thank you for your time.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Thank you. Colleen, can I just remove this? Thank you.
Next up is Dave Nelson.
Before I start, Mayor, you made a comment about voter confidence, and I need that repeated so I don't violate protocol. Did you make a statement before public comments? I apologize if you didn't.
No, I don't remember saying anything about voter confidence.
Okay. I just want to thank.
Did I?
Okay. I'll go ahead, and if I'm wrong, stop me.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. First of all, my name is Dave Nelson. I've been a resident of Littleton for nearly nine years now, transplant from Minnesota. And I want to thank Mayor, you, and the council for the good work you do here in Littleton. I just want to make a few brief comments about voter confidence. I'm sure that I want you to be confident in what you are doing, and I'm sure you, for those you hire, you want to be confident in their abilities as well. I looked up the word confident, and I found words like this. A belief or conviction that an outcome will be favorable, feeling certain. A belief or conviction that an outcome will be favorable, feeling certain, assured, which of course involves trust and reliance. I was a poll watcher, and I saw some very good things. I saw some really well-oiled machines in process. But I also know that the opposite, the antonym of confidence, is distrust, apprehension, uncertainty, and doubt. And when I watched the polls, I saw many, many things, as I indicated, that were very well-run, but I was very hesitant about what I didn't see. I didn't see what was going on inside those machines. And at this point, it has been shown that as little as a flash drive or a smartphone can alter many of those machines. So at this point, I will confidently say that I don't have confidence in the voting machines. I would like to see same-day count balloting, whereas a previous person had a similar opinion about one paper, one vote, a little more time, but accuracy for sure. My history is that of a math teacher and a coach, and presently an auctioneer. Numbers matter to me. They really do. Quick story since I have time, and that is, being a math teacher, I thought it was very important that our daughter knew how to count. So I said, Mandy, let's count, and she would say one, and I would say two, and she'd say three, and I'd say four, and on we went. So we had company one day, and I said, Mandy, count for John. And she straightened up, I don't know how old she was, pretty young, and she said, one, three, five, seven, nine. Because she knew her numbers very well. Without my help, though, it came off tilted, jilted. And likewise, I want to have the confidence that the numbers add up the way they should. Thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for the privilege of hearing me out.
Thank you, Dave, for coming on tonight. Last person to sign up is Pam Chadbourne.
Good evening, Council. My name is Pam Chadbourne, eleven block and a half from here. First, I was angry the last time I talked to you. Want to thank you, Mayor, for just approaching me and talking to me a little bit after that. I really appreciate that. But I'm still concerned about the same issue, and let's see if I can talk about that a little more effectively. I'm going to refer to Scott Millen, who is our Chair of the Environmental Stewardship Committee, and you know, when he talked at the ESC, he actually mentioned, oh, we're going to have, we have data-driven decision-making. And let me just say, we don't. We don't. And I'm going to tell you that. I know that. I have watched what's going on, and there is not data-driven decision-making here, and that's at the heart of what the process I would like to see is. Specifically, this is not about council's priorities. Those don't matter at all. What matters is the city and the outcomes we want for the city, and I want us to determine together what those outcomes are. I'm going to refer to the Historic Preservation Board meeting last night, in which they were severely limited by the staff questions being asked. And theoretically, that was because that's what council wants. You're not getting the benefit of the experience, expertise, and education of the Historic Preservation Board members because of the limitations placed on that discussion by staff, inappropriately and wrongly. We should have, I, as a citizen, expect that all of you serve all of us. All of the boards and commissions and you work together to determine what's best for the city. Then, we work together in a public process to set targets for the city, and then we codify those targets. Then, what I'd like to see is the city set up a quarterly procedure to review our achievement and progress on those targets. That, to me, is an appropriate public process. It's also good project management. I mean, that's just project management one-on-one. That's the way you set up a mission, and that is the way that you execute, whether it is a concept or building the thing, or launching it, flying, or on the science mission. That's what you do. City's analogous. So, to clarify, that is what I'm looking for, is I don't want what council thinks is good. I think we've got to arrive at this together and use the experience and the education and the expertise of all the board and commission members. They're really just an extension of you. It should be like talking to yourself. Get everything that they have to offer you, and that will inform all of us together. So I hope that clarifies a little bit more in my three minutes, what I'm talking about. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam. Is there anybody else that is here that did not have a chance to sign up that would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'm going to turn it over to see if the city manager has any sort of response, anything?
Thank you, Mayor. I will clarify for the council that last night's HPB meeting and the agenda item was very closely focused on the council's request at the conclusion of your study session on February 14th about Geneva Village, where the council asked the HPB to offer its opinion on the historical value and significance of Geneva Village. So staff, you know, very closely facilitated that to try to focus the conversation on that question, as opposed to many other questions that could have been answered, could have been surfaced, could have been a lot of other discussions. But that was the direction at the end of the council study session, and that was what the HPB was trying to be responsive to last night. I'll also just note that for residents who are interested in learning more about development projects, in the last few months, our Community Development Department has put together, I think, a very helpful Littleton Development Report that is published online. You can find it from the city's website, and I think we try to keep up and publish kind of the latest on the city's largest projects and major dates that are happening there. So I would encourage any residents interested in development to have a look for that on the city's website. Those would be my comments, Mayor.
Great, thanks. City Attorney, you have anything? No? All right. All right, next up on the agenda, item eight, consent agenda items. Consent agenda items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. Item A is Resolution 33 of 2023, authorizing three applications for funding from the Arapahoe County Open Spaces Grant Program for I, underpass feasibility of the High Line Canal Trail at Mineral; II, mineral trail paving; and III, Kettering Gallup Master Plan. Item B, ID 2376, motion to appoint Councilmember Barr as council liaison to the Environmental Stewardship Committee. Item C is Resolution 41 of 2023, adopting a new reserve policy in the principles of sound financial management. Item D is ID 2375, motion to approve minutes of the April 4th, 2023, regular meeting of the city council. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items A through D. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent agendas A through D. Voting's open.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank. Turn my mic off. Item nine on the agenda is general business. We have one item on general business tonight. It is Resolution 40, 2023, expressing the city council's opposition to SB 23-213 pertaining to land use and affordable housing. So, we'll turn it over, have council or staff kind of give us an update on this, and then we can ask questions, and then we can have a motion and have further discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. At the April 11th study session, that was just last week, the council considered the House Bill 23-213 as currently drafted. Senate bill, sorry, thank you. Senate Bill 23-213, we'll call it that. And the council had quite a discussion. Council or staff captured some notes. At the conclusion of that discussion, council directed staff to come back with a resolution that would take a formal position in opposition to the bill, and so that's what you have in front of you tonight. Staff tried through the whereas language in the resolution to reiterate, capture back some of council's more consensus or themed discussion from last week, and those would be the reasons that the city would consider opposition to Senate Bill 213. With that, I will ask our Assistant City Manager Kathleen Osher to just briefly, since this is now for this meeting, recap just the essence or some of the highs and lows of the bill, and then if you have any updates just on the process and the hearings today, that would be interesting to the council as they consider the resolution.
Okay. So I wish I had more updates. So I think for anybody that tuned in this afternoon, the committee paused proceedings, so did resume, I think, basically almost at the same minute that you started your meeting, so a little difficult to monitor now. The legislation as coming into this evening's meeting is unamended, and again, this represents a sweeping change to the, what has typically been zoning and local regulations related to land use that has resided with municipalities now would become of statewide concern, and there would be measures included in there that could make significant changes to both our future land use map and some of the other zoning work that we've done and the land use revisions that we've made in recent years. So I know you had a very robust discussion last week on the 11th, and again, as City Manager Becklinburg mentioned, tried to capture that within this whereas text. So happy to answer any questions. Wish I had more of an update. We do understand there are a number of amendments that could be proposed. None have yet been attached to the bills, so the legislation coming into this meeting still stands. So I think this still fits in terms of the message that the council had talked about sending with the legislation as proposed.
Great, thanks. Does council have any questions? You want to save your comment until when we have discussion? Oh, okay.
No, I think you did capture the meeting in the resolution, so I really appreciate that. I was kind of looking at it skeptically, Kalib, but I think you really did a good job. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Nope, okay. Well, then, is there a motion? And then we can have discussion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to Resolution 40-dash, am I on the right one? Yeah.
I move to approve.
To approve Resolution 40-2023, expressing the city's opposition to Senate Bill 23-213 pertaining to land use and affordable housing.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 40. Any further discussion? Councilmember Driscoll.
Yeah, unfortunately, I missed that conversation last week, but I'm fully in support of this. I think the state is overstepping their bounds, and being a homerolled city, I'd like to see us stick together on this and say no, and publicly vote on this to make sure the city or the state hears us.
Thank you. Councilmember Millman.
I was at that meeting, and I will not be supporting the resolution tonight, but I am supportive of Senate Bill 213. And here's why. We've got a housing crisis in this state, and it's not just in Littleton, it's the entire state. And I think this is a step that the state is, or the legislative body is taking to get this moving forward. I mean, how long does it take for municipalities to slowly push the needle forward with all of the opposition that they face, whether it's from, in any form or fashion? We need housing. We are desperate. We need housing. Let the state take, I don't want to say, take the blame for, you know, whatever angst and anger might be coming from citizens because there's more denser housing in their neighborhoods or their cities. But we need it. I mean, I look back at even just a couple of years ago when, I'm sorry, it's my voice, allergies. When we, as a different council, we were talking about ADUs. ADUs. I was the only one that was open to letting it go citywide, but we fought, it was fought and fought and fought. We had tiny little approval of where ADUs could go in the city. It's just, it's, I think this is the state's way of saying, okay, we're going to approach this regionally, we're going to come together, we're going to try to create more housing. It's as simple as that. So I do support the resolution. I do support Senate Bill 213. I know it's not perfect. I don't think it's taken away local control, and quite frankly, I think local control has caused a lot of these housing issues that we're facing right now. So I am supportive of SB 213. Sorry about my voice.
Thank you. Councilmember Valdez, were you going to, did you have your hand up there?
Not yet.
Oh. Mayor Protem?
You know, I agree with some of the points that are in our resolution. I think for me, opposing SB 213 outright, I don't think it's helpful. I don't think it's strategic. I don't think it's going to get us what we want and send a message that we want. I'd much rather see us take an amend position. My concerns, which I raised in our study session, were around, you know, the displacement of possible folks, and of course, like, the current efforts, the current work we've done on inclusionary housing. That's been addressed in some of the amendments that are proposed. So, you know, some of those legislators heard what we were saying. They're in the amendments, and if we oppose now, like outright, we're out of the discussion, we're out of the negotiating. I guess I just don't see the use of us coming out strong on that. So I think for me, I have to vote against this resolution because I don't think it's going to advance our strategic way toward affordable housing.
Councilmember Grove.
I support our opposition for a lot of reasons. I don't think more supply of expensive housing solves our affordable housing crisis, and unless a developer gets some sort of government funding or some sort of over-the-top incentive, these houses are going to be expensive. I think it violates our home rule. I don't think denser housing in our neighborhood without parking requirements is good for our neighborhoods. When we did the envision process and the codes, we heard loud and clear from our citizens that they wanted to maintain the character of their neighborhoods, and I think this severely impacts the character of our neighborhoods. I don't trust the amendments. A fourplex next door to me that's scraped in my, next to my single-family home is not, still doesn't solve the problem of affordable housing. Four cars instead of on my cul-de-sac makes parking very difficult, and I know that's small and just day-to-day, but it's one of the reasons I and many of my neighbors and many of the citizens moved to Littleton. It's not that we're against change, I think, in many cases, and I'm not against change. It's just done in a way that's appropriate for that city, and I think the individuals in the community are the ones that make that decision. So I will support this opposition.
Councilmember Barr, let's go down the line.
Well, thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to be opposing the resolution, but I don't want to hang too much on, I guess, the specifics as to why, as that was discussed during the study session, and Councilmember Millman, I think, did a good job at recapping some of that. But I do want to kind of maybe, you know, put a kind of a word of hope or a charge to us as council to the fact that the mechanism by which this would have been implemented is actually what many municipalities across the state are in opposition to, how it is being implemented. The specifics as to what would be implemented, I think, are still, can still be very much up for discussion. You know, maybe fourplexes are too much, but increasing density in some ways somehow throughout our major metro area, it seems like a sensible direction, and I hope we can kind of find common ground as council moving forward past this resolution, past whatever the outcome of the Senate bill is, to still kind of work towards this challenge of affordable housing. Again, Councilmember Millman said, you know, the challenge is in front of us, and if we're not going to solve it collectively through state action, the challenge is still there, and we... And we, we as a city need to do the most that we can to address that challenge. So yeah, I'll be opposing the resolution as it's written, but I am hopeful that we can work together in the future on more affordable housing discussions.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Valdez?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Senate Bill two thirteen is a power grab by the state. It's taking away the city's ability to zone our own city. We'll have to zone it as the state tells us. The state will be making decisions that are best for the state, not necessarily what is best for the city of Littleton. If, it, it literally is just taking away our local control of government, which is more responsive to our citizens than the state government. Home rule cities, if we put the power of our citizens into the hand of the state bureaucracy, we'll never get it back. The state will not give cities back the power to zone their own cities as we see fit, future councils see fit. If this council is willing to go along with the governor and the state on this legislation, it makes me wonder, have you actually read it? Or are, are you just so willing to have bigger government rule the city of Littleton on this stuff? Zoning is a big issue for the city of Littleton. We just spent four years working on the, on that thing, on zoning our city, the entire city. The, we have twenty-three units, is it now Kathleen, in process?
Twenty-three hundred.
Twenty-three hundred in the process. And over the past ten years, we have, we have built thousands of units. I don't remember, do you have that number off the top of your head?
I don't, no.
I don't either, but thousands of units. The city has been doing stuff. When we rezoned, we did add accessory dwelling units. And we, if I recall, we also had a parking requirement in there. The state, if we go, if we allow the state to tell us what we have to do, the state says you do not, you are not allowed to have a parking requirement. That means if somebody builds a fourplex next to you, they don't have to have a parking requirement where they have them parked on-site. They can park all over the street. And that's, you know, maybe people want that. This just takes away the power and gives it to the state. And it's not just for this council, it's for future councils and future citizens of Littleton. I, as I said last week, we need to send a big no to the governor and to the state legislators that this is just unacceptable to take our power as a home rule city. Thank you.
Well, as much as it pains me to say, I agree with Councilmember Valdez. When I think, when I think about that, maybe, maybe I'm thinking something wrong here, Jerry. You know, I am opposed to Senate Bill two thirteen for a variety of reasons. The, the two main ones are, is this preemption of our home rule authority or local control. I think that's the, the overarching issue that I see with this bill. The second is the, the process that this bill was crafted through. I mean, cities were not involved until just before the introduction. And had, had the sponsor of the governor's office brought cities in, we could have figured out, rather than scramble the night of the hearing and have a three and a half hour delay in the committee to try to figure out if they can force through amendments or not, it would have been much more of a collaborative effort. And that's, you know, we always talk about collaboration and working together rather than pitting the state versus the city or cities and counties versus each other. So that's the main reason why I'm opposing this. You know, as, as Councilmember Valdez said, this is, I'm, I'm, you know, standing up for Littleton, not necessarily attacking the proposed changes that are, to land use that are in the bill. I actually like a lot of the things that are in there. But I want Littleton to, to do that, not have the for, the, the state force us to do that. To kind of talk about some of the things Councilmember Milliman mentioned is, I think this bill doesn't actually take into effect the good work that we've done here in Littleton. I agree with you that, you know, we may not have gone as, as far as you or I would have liked, but I think this bill will actually push us even farther backwards. Rather than actually having our staff spend time reviewing and approving projects that might get us housing, we're going to have to go back to the drawing board and rewrite our code and redo stuff and kind of just waste time that we're being forced to, rather than actually getting our, our hands dirty. We'll still be, you know, figuring out the plans to how we can make our codes fit with what the bill will have here. I, I think this bill will actually make things just take longer. I think there will be litigation. It's not like, I think there will be litigation. If this bill passes, there will be litigation. CML will sue, cities will sue. We've had to tie our city attorney to a tree so he doesn't run off and sue him preemptively here. And I think the, the litigation will also slow things down. It'll make it very confusing for cities, for developers, and not just big developers, but people that even want to add an ADU to their house of what, what are they going to do? Are they going to wait till these new codes are enacted? You know, we have, we, we do have a housing crisis here in the state, in Littleton, everywhere. It's important that we, we address that. But as some of the other bills that the legislation, legislators are contemplating right now, they're talking about how each community is unique. You know, one of the proposed amendments is removing rural resort, resort communities from some of the exemptions because they, they recognize their uniqueness. Well, Littleton's unique compared to Centennial, compared to Inglewood, compared to Sheridan. And so I think rather than lumping us all together with the same uniformity of, of the, the basis code, the basic that you need, the floor you need to get to, it, it, it will kind of remove some of that, potentially remove some of that uniqueness. You know, in Arapahoe County, we have a hundred and eight thousand units that are, are approved to be built. They still need to go get permits and, and, but they're, they're not coming out of the ground. And it's not because of the zoning in Arapahoe County. It's because of issues such as supply chain issues, labor shortages. Big one is finances with interest rates going up. There's a lot of, a myriad of other issues, and it's not particularly the zoning. And so I think while this bill addresses some of the issues, I think it's so overreaching that it just muddies the water. And to Mayor Protem's point, I, I don't agree that opposing it takes us out of discussion. We're going to be in the discussion no matter what. I think if we, if we say we oppose this bill, it, it allows us to come to the table and say, well, what, how can we work together to that? I mean, I don't know, does staff know how many other municipalities have opposed? I know last night, Inglewood opposed it, Centennial, Golden and Broomfield have all opposed it unanimously, surprisingly, just giving the makeup of their, their councils.
I think a lot of cities and municipalities were meeting this evening as well, but it was a total of fifty-six that CML is tracking that have voted to oppose two-one-three. And it's some of the larger jurisdictions that you would think of along the front range like Arbada, Lakewood, Broomfield, Denver. As you mentioned, city of Inglewood last night, Sheridan, Lone Tree, Centennial, the Village People, Greenwood Village and Cherry Hills Village. But I'm not aware of any jurisdictions that have voted their support for it. I know that there was some strong push to Mayor Protem's point of perhaps trying to get them to work with things and offer amendments so that we're not necessarily left out of the game. But to the mayor's point, we're pretty late in the game to offer a lot of these meaningful suggestions, so.
And it was only until the cities were brought into the fold that could voice our opposition, that some of these changes were, were crafted. And, you know, if there's, I don't know how many amendments there are going to be presented tonight during the committee, competing amendments too, from both sides. You know, I don't know how this thing is going to turn out if, where it'll end up. And so I think that two thirteen is not, while it's in a good place, and as I mentioned last night, that, you know, I come, you know, applaud the governor for bringing so many people, bipartisan effort of people together to talk about housing in opposition of his bill. But to bring people together to talk about this important issue is, is really important. I think a lot of, a lot of communities are talking about this and will give some thought. And I will full-heartedly say, let's put some of the policies that are in two thirteen in place here in, in Littleton. I would say to the, the crowds that, the supporters of the bill that came down and testified when I was down there two weeks ago, the, the Yimby's, if you will, the yes-in-my-backyard people, how they're really pushing this, you know, show up at your local governments that have, have had control of land use and zoning here. And I know it was, you know, when we were doing ULUC, there was very little public support of this. I mean, even at the, at the microphone here, I know there's a lot of support for it, but we need these people to come down and work with us to do that. So we need this local interaction and collaboration with our citizens rather than it being just forced on everyone's throat. So I will be supporting the resolution in opposition of the Senate bill.
A yes or a no?
All right. Does anyone have anything else to say about the resolution? So we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution forty of twenty-three, which expresses the city's, city council's opposition to SB twenty-three, two thirteen pertaining to land use and affordable housing. Voting is open. So a voting for is to approve the opposing resolution. So everyone got that?
The vote is for in favor with council members Barr, Riden and Milliman voting no. The motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Next up on the agenda, item ten, ordinances on second reading and public hearings. We have two tonight. First one, A is ordinance, A to twenty-three, an ordinance on second reading approving a new communication circuit, three-year agreement with Lumen for a dispatch connection to the state of Colorado Public Safety Radio System. So as we do with all ordinance on second reading, we'll have a staff presentation. We can ask questions, then we'll open up for public comment. If council has further questions sparked by public conversation or public comment, we can ask them what, and then we'll need a motion and a second, and then we can have further discussion and a vote. So turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a comparatively technical item in contract the council normally would not review. And it, it does relate, as the mayor said, to an important circuit for our, our Public Safety Radio Network, so it's something that we need to do. But as we are yet to bring our new purchasing rules to council for your consideration and codification, we are still working under our old charter rules for, for purchasing, which require that any contract for longer than two years requires council approval. As I know our, our information technology director, Scott Rogers, will give a brief explanation for, we can save significant money if we have a three-year agreement. So we're bringing this for, for your consideration. So Scott, I'll turn it over to Scott for a very brief summary of what we need to do and then seek council's approval of the contract.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight the, the numbers that we were looking at as far as the different contracts that were available to us through this circuit replacement. And going with the three-year contract, at three years, we have the, the total savings of thirty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars through the life of that contract. So the two-year contract would cost seventeen-seventy-six a month, and the three-year contract is over half savings there of seven-hundred-and-thirteen dollars per month. And it is a circuit that's required for us to connect to the state public radio, our Public Safety Radio System. And it is a change that they're mandating that we change the technology that we're using.
Questions, council? Councilmember Grove?
How does this affect the budget?
Well, there will be some realized savings next year in our telecommunications budget. It's not a phenomenal amount, but it will save at least a couple hundred dollars every month.
So the savings goes to next year?
Yeah. So the savings is really putting us in the three-year contract versus just doing a two-year contract and not bringing it to council.
But the contract was already in the budget for this year, whatever?
We have existing circuits that we currently use. It's just a different type of technology. It's a copper-based technology, and this is moving us to the data fiber-based network, which most of the telecommunications providers are pushing customers towards that type of network scenario. And so the state is just getting ahead of that and, and making the change.
Thank you.
Any third questions, council? Any no questions? All right. We'll open the public comment portion of this ordinance eight. And at seven fifty, no one has signed up. Would anyone like to come and speak? Pam?
My name is Pam Chapron, live in the block now from here. I wasn't going to talk until I heard about the copper to fiber. I love fiber. It's a great technology. But you know, the copper wires stay active during power outages, and fiber doesn't. The reason why fiber, copper stuck around a long time is because it's awesome and it has a backup. I realize that this is not about the technology. I raised the question about it, though. I think we should be concerned about it. Again, I love fiber, but I also love resiliency and robustness. It's an essential part of any system. And at least it's got to be considered. And so my concern is about the technology, and I'm just going to say it's not in this question for you, but I'm worried about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Close the public comment at seven fifty-one. And council, any questions? I have a question. I'm going to ask a question about the, the public comment there. If we kept our copper wires in a power outage, will we be able to communicate with the state if they have fiber?
In both instances, both sides of this connection have backup power. We have battery backup that keeps us running in the short term locally in our PSAP here, and that transfers over to a generator after a few minutes of, of a power outage from Excel. And the same thing happens on the state side of the connection. And we can run much longer distances over the fiber connection and only have that power at, at both ends. So it's, it is covered in the instance where there would be a prolonged power outage.
Yep. Thank you for that. All right. Council, is there a motion?
Yeah, Mayor, approve ordinance eight, zero-eight dash twenty-two-three, an ordinance on second reading approving a new communication circuit, three-year agreement with Lumen for a dispatch connection to the state of Colorado Public Safety Radio.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance eight. Any discussion, council? No discussion? All right. We'll open the voting. Maybe?
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right. Next up on our agenda is item B, ordinance nine, twenty-three, an ordinance on second reading approving amendments to titles two and ten of the Littleton City Code regarding the appeals process for quasi-judicial board and commission decisions. So once again, we'll have staff presentation, questions, public comment, and then a motion in a second. So city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Over the last several months, the council has, has considered options for clarifying and making consistent the land use appeals process in our, our, our land use code. We, staff received direction several weeks ago on, on council's preferred option, and we've now moved that into the ordinance and do have it tonight for second reading. At one of the, the recent steps, our city attorney, Reed Betzing, stepped in to draft ordinances and options to, and make sure that, that things were clarified for council. So I believe Reed will, will provide the overview to council tonight of the options. And our, our community development staff, Michael, Mike Sutherland and Jen Henninger are here to help with, with any questions as well, so.
Mike's going to drive again, so just to forewarn you.
Buckle your seat belts.
Yes. As the city manager indicated, we are here tonight to discuss the potential of amending two sections within our ordinance or within our city code. One is title two, and one is title ten. And by doing that, it would clarify the appeals process for our quasi-boards and commissions. Following slide, Michael. Thank you. So as we've, as we've discussed before, there are some discrepancies. discussed before, there are some discrepancies within our current existing code. We have Title II, which says that all quasi decisions are final. And then we have sections within our ULUC that have a different appeals process. So, there's a conflict there that needs to be resolved one way or another. Next slide, Michael. As mentioned, we've met a number of different times, both with city council, twice with our planning commission, and once with HPB during a study session. It was based upon those discussions that we prepared a couple of options for council's consideration back on the fourth. It was at that meeting that council went with what we call ordinance B. Following slide, Michael. What ordinance B basically says, and this is the one that planning commission adopted, is that all quasi judicial decisions may be appealed to city council by an applicant. What that does is it adds perhaps a couple of different areas that council may not have seen in the past. For example, board of adjustments with variances, those could be appealed by an applicant, if they were denied, to city council. That also goes for planning commission decisions. Those could also be appealed. Essentially, what the change is between what we have currently and what this proposed ordinance would be is it expands the ability for applicants to appeal certain decisions to city council. It also defines that process, which was lacking within our, our current iteration of our code. There wasn't anything in the code that said how that hearing was supposed to happen, who was an aggrieved party, so to speak. And so, there were various questions that existed, which is what has led to the clarification on that. And so, with that said, Michael is willing to answer all questions. I am as well. But what we'd be asking for our council to do tonight is to approve the ordinance, which basically has all land use decisions appealable to city council. And obviously, it doesn't take away anyone's ability to file a 106 action if after, after the conclusion of that, someone wanted to go through the district court route. So, that's all we have today.
Make it, council, any questions? No question? I have one question. Sorry, I didn't ask this beforehand, but looking at this, I'm looking at, I think it's Title II, Section 1, where it says determinations. When it says, "All quasi judicial determinations of any board or commission shall be final and shall be subject to judicial review as provided by state law, such appeal may be taken by any person aggrieved or by the city council or any officer, department, or board of the city." Am I reading that to say that, you know, if planning commission makes a decision, that HPB could appeal it? Or if HPB makes a decision, Ms. Henninger could appeal it if she wanted to?
Just a clarification, are you Title 2 dash 2 dash 5? Is that what you're looking
align with council goals, and it disregards citizens' property rights. Firstly, according
at?
Yes, I'm actually in, looking at the packet in the ordinance there where it just has A. It's on line 62?
to council goal number eight, is it fair and does it facilitate ongoing conversation
Got it.
On page two?
that captures all of the considerations involved in ensuring interests were addressed?
I would say that would be a pretty unusual circumstance, and probably the city attorney's
A citizen engagement process was non-existent. So, how will citizens' property rights be
advice would be that would be too literal of a, of a, of a review. Obviously, 2 dash,
assured rather than just the applicants? Counsel, you are supposed to be representing
2 dash 5 has been in our city code for over 50 years. So, perhaps not artfully worded
the electors. Secondly, how does the appeal process through the court system affect citizens?
to use a, a term that I hear thrown around a lot.
Okay. So, so you're saying that no council, council or a different board or a staff
Besides being an economic hardship, a court hearing is not guaranteed, and the courts only determine if the judicial body acted within their authority. This ordinance essentially
member could not appeal a decision?
Correct.
Okay. No other questions? All right. Well, then let's open the public comment portion
removes citizens' ability to protect their property rights. Thirdly, does this ordinance provide accountability internally and externally per council goal number eight? According to
of this. Do have it. All right. At 7:59, we have two people signed up. First person,
my research, traditionally, local governments are responsible not only for creating policies,
Lynn Christensen.
but also sitting in judgment of appeals. A clear, effective land use code is necessary for a council to even consider giving up their quasi judicial role. The ULUC has not provided identified core housing needs or diverse housing types per council goal number six. The overwhelming majority of the 2,300 units on the development activity list are market rate rental apartments, hardly affordable. Centennial's land use code assigns our city council final approval of site plans located within 500 feet of residential boundaries and ratification of all other site plans. In contrast, the ULUC provides an opaque administrative site plan process without public notification or any review. And planning commission's role is generally only to approve, quote, concepts. So, where is there transparency and accountability? Counsel, you are ultimately responsible for the outcome of Littleton's long-term development, whether or not you accept that responsibility. So, for the record, this ordinance completely disregards citizens' property rights and is not consistent with council goals. I ask your consideration for all planning commission appeals to go to city council, but most importantly, that accountability and transparency be provided in the ULUC development process. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Lynn. Next person up is Pam Chabourne.
I'm Pam Chabourne, still a little block and half from here, and I agree with Lynn. She's absolutely right. I, I think the recommendations I may not totally agree with. I'm going to say that historically, and I was dismayed that council never recognized this in your discussions. The Board of Adjustment was created many decades ago, maybe, you know, hundreds of years of tradition, to hear appeals of land use matters. And they were selected to be free of conflict compared to the planning commission or the zoning board, or whatever you call the board is that makes the initial decision. So, actually, you have staff making one determination, then a planning commission hearing at the land use board, the zoning board, and then you'd have a board of adjustment who would hear the appeals of that. And they were chosen to be free of conflict as much as possible. And for one thing, I'm concerned that our boards and commissions are becoming less and less free of conflict. We need a conflict of interest policy, counsel. I've said this before, and it requires action on your part, and that relates to something that Lynn said. But, so Lynn is thinking that council can hear that. Maybe that's good, because maybe if people don't like your decisions, there's an election coming. And so, that might be a way of assuring or reducing the influence of special interests. But I kind of like the Board of Adjustment too, and it has a lot of a tradition behind it. The arguments or the causes or the reasons for this given by staff, I think, are puny. Oh, it was inconsistent. Well, there's lots of ways to fix that inconsistency than to create up this, create this scheme. Who is the aggrieved party? Again, very easy to define. And I'm going to say that zoning ultimately protects everybody, not just the rights of the applicants. And this proposal is all about applicants and nothing about your citizens, as Lynn pointed out. This is something that has gone on for every land use decision that I've been engaged with or paid attention to. And the rights of the neighbors are as important. We have a right to know what we to expect is next to us. And the ULUC is terrible at that. And the process is terrible. As Lynn pointed out, the master development plan, especially the introduction of the concept one, the year after the ULUC, that was nefarious. It is offensive to the people of Littleton. It should not have been done. The ULUC is unproven and untested. It's pretty much invented out of thin air, and we need, with an administrative process, we need more oversight and more ability to check and test and, and stop bad things, not less.
Thank you, Pam.
Thanks.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Didn't sign up. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. 8:06. Any other questions, council? Council member Grove?
So, since not, what planning commission decisions would they make that wouldn't come to council? I'm not clear. I thought that list was exhaustive, that you gave on slide. What number is it? Five. What other decisions would they make that would not come to us?
So, they could approve a, let's see, a, um, use by special review or a conditional use. If it's approved, that would not get to the city council. So, once the, if there's an approval, that decision is essentially final unless it's appealed through the court system. If they make a denial on a conditional use or a site plan or a master development plan, and the applicant would like to appeal that, that's the way that city council would see that type of appeal happen.
So, it's just conditional use, then, is that the only thing that wouldn't come to us?
Well, I should clarify, any approval of, of a wide variety of cases would not come to city council. There are, really, all others are open for appeal. And then there are some decisions, like zoning decisions, where they make a recommendation that's going to city council anyway.
I think what, with the condition you mentioned last time, is that if it was approved with conditions and they wanted to appeal the conditions, that would come to us.
Right.
Yeah.
But not...
Correct. And that would be for a brand-new public hearing, at which case you'd have full authority to make new conditions, deny the application, or anything else council wanted to do.
So, if they did last, Matt's development site plan, they say, we approve it with conditions, that could come to us?
If the applicant...
Wanted to appeal.
Yeah, could not live with a condition that, that was approved by one of the, the boards.
Because it fell into site plan.
Yeah.
Give us an example of conditional use that you're talking about, like something that is a gas station and becomes a brewery?
Correct. So, gas stations in the corridor mixed zoning district are conditional uses. And conditional uses are typically those uses that are appropriate in some parts of a zoning district, but not appropriate in others. That decision is for the planning commission to make as to the appropriateness of the, of the use within the zone district. And if that were to be denied, the applicant may be able to appeal that to city council.
Wait a second. You just said conditional use doesn't come to city council?
Uh, conditional uses, if they are denied...
Appealed, yeah.
If they are, if, if planning commission approves a conditional use...
Okay, it's here.
Then there's no way it would come to city council.
Okay, so back to my original question. I'm, I'm getting confused. Is there any decisions that planning commission makes that if there is an appeal, would not come to city council?
No.
Okay. So, anything appealed, what this list, subdivision, plaque, conditional use, that whole thing on the slide, covers everything the planning commission does?
Yes, as far as public hearings goes. So, there may be other business items that they do that are, are, would not be on the list.
Okay, so they're all, it's covered?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think they approve, what, flood planes?
Yeah.
I don't know if flood planes are appealable to...
There is a, a method to appeal, appeal flood planes, but yeah, maybe not to city council.
Okay, and then I...
But it, it's very, very seldom that they're doing things outside of, kind of, those would be the, the four biggies that planning commission is involved in from a public hearing in which there would be an applicant.
Correct.
That makes sense, but I just didn't know if there was something else. Okay, then, back to what the mayor was saying about other boards or commissions could appeal. I'm not seeing that. Maybe that's in the Title 10 dash 9 dash 3 dot 7. But it seems to me, just because they haven't done it and were addressing and updating this appeals process, wouldn't it make sense to get that out of there? I, I don't see exactly where it is unless it's in that, um, part of the code. So...
It's in the, it's in the ordinance part of the, just after the staff communication, the...
What, what line is it?
Line 60, 62 to 64, looks like.
Doesn't that say such an appeal may be taken by any aggrieved person or by the city council or any officer, department, or board of the city to the court?
Correct. That's what I, yeah, okay, that's what I was just asking. It just said...
It doesn't say to the court. It says...
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I, I just tried to clarify it because...
I'm sorry. The previous sentence, the first sentence talks about determinations, except as provided in 10, 9, 3, 7, or elsewhere in the code, "All quasi judicial determinations of any board or commission shall be final and shall be subject to judicial review as provided by state law. Such appeal," when it says such appeal, it's referencing the previous stated appeal, which is those ones that are considered final, which are then appealable to the court. In terms of any clarification, if someone wanted to make a motion, I would have no problems addressing that amendment, excuse me, an amendment to that, which would be essentially striking or any officer, department, or board of the city. I mean, that would be a strike through of, you know, on line 62 and, and 63.
But shouldn't we, by any aggrieved person? Or just take out, or by the city council or any officer? I mean, where, where do we want to take it out?
Right up...
Just because it hasn't been done, it could be done in the future if we had somebody who took issue.
Sure. And if council, if council were so inclined to make sure that the impossible doesn't become possible, then the way to do that would be to offer an amendment, probably deleting where it starts on line 63, starting with, or any officer, department, or board of the city. Just delete that language.
We don't have a motion yet, so...
Yeah, that, that makes sense to me. Having written bylaws, you don't really need to use them unless something goes haywire, and when something goes haywire, it really goes haywire. Thank you.
Is that referenced, or would that impact anything else, anywhere else in the code? I know, I know you love making amendments on the fly from the dais here, so...
No, I appreciate the opportunity.
Unintended consequences.
No, I don't believe there's anything else in, in our code that would be...
May I even proffer the idea if we're willing to entertain just making that motion at a upcoming council session, so that staff can actually ensure that there is no conflict in making that amendment?
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
And so, doing it on the fly?
Yeah.
Okay.
I feel, I feel comfortable that it's not going to mess up anything in our code.
Okay.
Any other questions? I mean, that would be a strike through of, you know, on line sixty-two and sixty-three.
But shouldn't we, by any aggrieved person? Or just take out, or by the city council or any officer? I mean, where do we want to take it out? Just because it hasn't been done, it could be done in the future if we had somebody who took issue.
And if council, if council were so inclined to make sure that the impossible doesn't become possible, then the way to do that would be to offer an amendment, probably deleting where it starts on line sixty-three, starting with, or any officer, department, or board of the city. Just delete that language. We don't have a motion yet, so.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. Having written bylaws, you don't really need to use them unless something goes haywire, and when something goes haywire, it really goes haywire. Thank you.
Is that referenced, or would that impact anything else, anywhere else in the code? I know you love making amendments on the fly from the dais here, so- No, I appreciate the opportunity. Unintended consequences. No, I don't believe there's anything else in our code that would be changed.
May I even proffer the idea if we're willing to entertain just making that motion at an upcoming council session so that staff can actually ensure that there is no conflict in making that amendment? And so doing it on the fly?
Yeah.
Okay.
I feel comfortable that it's not going to mess up anything in our code.
Okay.
Any other questions, counsel? I've got a 50% chance of being right. I like those odds. All right. Counsel, is there a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve ordinance 09-2023, an ordinance on second reading approving amendments to Title II and X of the Littleton City Code regarding the appeals process of quasi-judicial board and commission decisions.
No, no.
Nope.
No.
Second?
We have a motion and a second.
Now.
Is there any comments?
I do just want to make one quick comment before we go into amendments and making motions. But, you know, I was in opposition to this particular tract of, this line of thinking, I'm not going to proffer any amendments this evening to this. I'm actually going to be in support of it because, quite honestly, it's ultimately not going to be that huge a deal. What I would ask of staff, kind of, walking into the future, is that when, that we do keep some sort of record and obviously log not only of the things that are coming to council for this appeals process, but why? You know, my primary concern was just essentially bogging council down with appeals by applicants, going through things like boards of adjustment for minor variances in, you know, their property use. And honestly, I feel that council and staff's time can be better used in other ways. So, I would just like to say to council and to staff, please, keep good records of what we are doing and how this, you know, plays out in the field, and essentially so we can revisit it if necessary, if this is becoming burdensome to staff and our council.
Maybe staff can tell us how many appeals have come to council. I don't think it's that many. I can think of two from HPV that went to council.
Those are two I'm thinking of. Those ATMs were the two that I can think of right off the bat. We did have some administrative appeals that went to a special, a special council for review, but yeah, they've been rare over the past five years.
My point is, it's not terribly burdensome.
One would think, and hope?
Yeah.
City attorney, are you?
I was just going to say, but previous to the adoption of the ULUC, planning commission was just making recommendations for the most part, and so they were never technically the final decision makers. So, that may sway the number of appeals that the city could hear.
Any other comments? Mayor Protem?
So, I raised this before, just because there's a quasi-judicial component here. I want to make sure that I'm doing my best to uphold that responsibility. So, since this will authorize us, every applicant that comes is potentially, could be appealed. So, that makes us accountable for that in terms of quasi-judicial. So, how will we handle citizens or private people who outreach us with an email with a concern?
As we said during this study session, it was only at the appeal point. It has become quasi-judicial for city council because it's a new hearing. So, up before that point, it's not quasi-judicial for city council. So, you can deal with that, just as you would normally.
Yeah, and I'd offer up exactly what you just ended with. You know, we have topics that come up that are quasi-judicial that don't go through planning, and we do get emails and we do get input from people, but, you know, like anything, we are instructed not to pay attention to them. So, I don't think it's really going to change anything.
Well- I get that technically, but I still think that that poses a problem once it becomes a new hearing.
Not unless you're buying me cocktails.
Okay.
Councilor Valdez?
I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay.
Cool. I move to amend the ordinance under Section 1, Paragraph A, and it's line thirty-six.
Councilmember Valdez, if I may? It's actually not Section 1. It's 2-2-5A of the city code.
I'm looking at the ordinance, and that's what we're moving to strike in the ordinance, right?
It's 2-2-5A is the section, though.
Right, yeah, which is Paragraph A.
So-
Right, so that's what I said. Section 1, Paragraph A, which is-
So, he's just, he's amending the ordinance, well, then, which will amend?
It's the ordinance. So, then, it's, so it's line sixty-three to strike or by the city council or any officer, department, or board of the city.
Did you want to include city council on that, or?
I do. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, did I not read city council? Yes.
You, you know, the attorney had said, or any officer, when his, when his-
Yeah, so it'll, so, to be clear, we want to strike or by the city council. So, that's what you're looking for?
I believe the earlier discussion was to leave city council there, but then remove the language that followed, which starts with, or any officer, department, or board of the city.
Let me correct myself, then. So, the motion that I'm making, then, is to, or any officer, department, or board of the city.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second to amend the ordinance to strike or any officer, department, or board of the city from paragraph, from lines sixty-three, sixty-four in the ordinance. Any questions, comments, counsel? And I just want to confirm with the city attorney, that was, if you feel like the 51%, 50.1% that you got the right-
That's me at 54. I feel really comfortable.
Sixty-three percent on that line? All right. All right, well, we have a motion and a second to amend the ordinance. It's open.
We're voting on the motion right now.
We're voting on the amendment, the motion to amend. To strike those nine words.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion to amend carries.
Guess your recommendation to wait next time wasn't taken. All right, we are back to the main motion to adopt the, approve the ordinance as amended. Any other comments, questions? Nope, seeing none. All right, well, I'll just say I'm going to, you know, support this. I think this is a step in the right direction for clarifying our appeals process and gives predictability to applicants and for our residents, community members, and for staff and council. So, I will be voting for it. You can vote no, Jerry. Voting's open.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have adjournment. But Ryan, to counsel, we have a study session immediately following this over there. So, we are adjourned at 8:23.
...
Alright, it is 8:32, so I'm gonna call this study session to orders here on April 18th. We've got two items to discuss tonight. First is Bemis House renovation partnership proposal. Second is council compensation discussion. I'll turn it over to the manager to lead us off with this Bemis House renovation.
Thanks Mayor. Good evening again, members of council and our guests tonight. I'll just say that the city has owned a Bemis House over at the edge of Stern Park since 1970. And we've had our Rotary Club for a long time too. And you'll hear more about that. And I think their dedicated service certainly has proven them as a longtime partner with the community. And for about a year now, they've been talking with staff about a concept by which the Bemis House might be preserved and expanded to facilitate some new uses, both for the Rotary Club and also for the city at large. So we wanted to check in with you tonight on the concepts that have been discussed and talk about some next steps, engage council's interest in what those next steps might be. So from our staff, Keith Reacher has been on point for this project. And we also have with us tonight Zach Frederick from the Rotary Club and Gene Green, who's working with them as the architect. That'll turn it over to Keith.
Thanks Jim, Council, appreciate it. I feel like I've been in a meeting for a little while already tonight, I'm not sure why. So what we want to do is, so probably a year ago, so I think Zach got in touch with us and talked to us about the Bemis House. So I'm gonna give you a little background on the Bemis House. And then Zach's gonna talk a little bit about this partnership idea. And Gene's here to kind of talk about the perspective from historic preservation and that kind of aspect. So that's kind of the discussion. And our really objective with you tonight is to, what we've talked about is moving forward potentially with a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, that would allow staff in the Rotary Club to continue down a path of further exploratory information, so that we would have a decision point down the road when we had a much better, you know, really eye on more of the details. So everybody's got their hands wrapped around it a little tighter at that point. So that's really what this discussion is about tonight. So a little background, by the way, this is the Bemis House. If you haven't been there, how many of you have been inside the Bemis House? Okay, it's when you were a farmer over there, right Jerry?
I was just renewed.
That's right. So basically, the Bemis House, the Bemis family obviously was a community icon family for a long time here in the developmental Littleton. And in 1970, the family gifted the Bemis House to the city with a provision that it needed to be part of Stern Park. And so basically, since that time, the only thing that's really been done is upkeep on the outside of the grounds and then basically weatherproofing the building over time. If you haven't been in the inside, nothing's been done on the inside. The things that in 2008, the city picked up a grant from the State Historical Fund that we matched, you know, basically, you know, $200,000, $100,000 to do those exterior improvements. It was really related to windows, you know, lead paint, asbestos siding, that kind of thing. So since then, you know, our facility staff has really just done the preservation from the outside of that. Last year, well, maybe a little more, maybe 18 months, we replaced the roof because it just started to fail. So the timing actually, interestingly enough, we went to the State Historical Fund and we asked for permission to replace the roof. And normally they would say, you have to go with the exact, you know, wood replica shingles. But it happened like two weeks after the Superior Fire. So they said, no, we'll let you go with something that looks like it, but it's a little more fire resistant. When we did the re-roofing on that. So and back then, there's also some upkeep. We do a combination of upkeep of the grounds with Salsaburbin. Currently, for the last, since that time, Western Welcome Week has leased the building, primarily the garage and storage space inside to, you know, just kind of run their event and those kind of things. But they're the only folks that really come and go in there from that perspective. So basically, a little background, you know, Zach came to us and started talking about this. I think he started with Mark at the time and then he came downstairs to me or wherever ended up. And so since that time, we had a lot of discussions, which Zach and Gene will talk about. We were able to bring in a whole bunch of staff on our side from, you know, facility side, from planning and zoning, from the historic preservation side. And then we also spent some time on site and included the State Historical Fund in that. Because we felt, you know, we know they're gonna be a player no matter what. So with that, I'll turn it over to the other angle to Bemis House.
Yeah, that's from the back.
To Zach.
There's some of our club members of the Littleton Rotary. We celebrated our 100th anniversary last year. The club was started in 1922, makes it one of the oldest Rotary Clubs in the country. And Ed Bemis, believe it or not, was a founding member and past president of the Littleton Rotary Club. And Mr. Stern, I think, was also in the Littleton Rotary Club. So I'm gonna talk with you a little about our club, a little about what we've done in the community, a little about our history. And then we're gonna talk about the concept or the idea that we have for the house and why we think it would be a great new asset for the community. And I also want to acknowledge a few guests from Littleton Rotary here today. Phil Cernanek, who I believe served on the council in the past. And he's our incoming president for next year. Heidi Taylor, who's Director of Community Projects. And our very own Pablo Unduraga, who is also an architect. And you're on the Development Board for downtown as well. So we've got a good team here to observe. And without further ado, I'll go to the next slide and we can look at a little bit about the Littleton Rotary's history. So there's a picture of Ed Bemis in the top left. And again, that was his family home that the family gave to the community. And he was one of our founding members and a very important rotarian person in the development of Littleton. House Waring, the editor of Littleton Independent. I won't go through all the luminaries that have been in Littleton Rotary over the years, but it obviously includes a number of Littleton City Council members. Bruce Beckman, Dave Lawrence, who ran Salsaburbin. Dennis Reynolds, Susan Thornton, a lot of these names are probably familiar. But really, just very special group going back 100 years of Littleton service and leadership. So this is just a snapshot of some of the community service we've done recently, whether it's Centennial Academy or Hudson Gardens. We have a lot going on. We have a foundation and a club. Obviously, the club is the boots on the ground. The foundation is the sort of financial part of the organization that supports grants in the community and globally. So we could look at the next page and see some additional local projects that we're involved in going on. We have a lot of experience with large capital fundraising projects. Most recent was the Endurance Feels on Wheels Building at a wrap of Broadway. We raised $60,000 towards the purchase of that property. We also raised $500,000 for Project Cure. So we do believe that a project of this nature is definitely within our scope of experience from the past. Just a little more look at our local giving here. This is from our foundation to the community. In the last seven years, about $460,000. Just last year, $77,000. I think we also gave $25,000 toward COVID grants when that all went down. Artie's Food Bag is one of our signature projects for the Centennial Academy. But you can see we support a wide variety of organizations here locally. And that's why Rotary exists. It's a service organization. And service to the community is a very big part of what we're focused on. So I think Keith covered some of the sort of top level stuff on the idea. I live over there by Stern Park. I live at Bemis and just Bemis and Shepherd, I think it is?
Your address.
Don't even think about the streets because I just come and go. But right there, just two houses down from the Bemis House on Bemis Street. And, you know, we sort of noticed that every weekend, there's weddings happening in the Rose Garden and all kinds of events in the park. My wife was putting together a fundraiser for All Souls Catholic School, where our son goes. And really had a hard time finding a suitable venue for the fundraiser. I mean, we looked at Hudson Gardens, a couple other spots, but there's really not a deep pool of options for that sort of thing. So, you know, the house just sits there. It's not really used. Cindy from Western Welcome Week is, she comes and goes very sporadically. And it looks pretty nice from the outside, but the inside needs a lot of TLC. So we had the idea that, you know, this would make a great kind of little event center. And the Littleton Rotary, we have our meetings sometimes at Columbine Country Club, sometimes at Rock Bottom Brewery, but we don't really have a fixed home for our activities, for our meetings. So the inspiration was really to create a home base for this historic 100-year-old Rotary Club and also develop a facility that could be used for events, community events, private events, and any revenues generated from the facility to go right back to the Littleton Rotary Foundation to support community activity. So that's kind of the general idea. Gene lives on the park as well, and he's an architect with historical expertise. And so I got in contact with him and we just started talking about ideas. What could you do with the property? And we've got a few sketches to show you here, and that's where I'll turn it over to Gene.
Thanks Zach. So I was asked to talk a little bit about my background and qualifications. Professional organizations with the American Institute of Architects, I'm a registered architect. The NCARB thing just means I'm licensed in all 50 states and a dozen countries or so. It's just reciprocity. And then you have various preservation groups, CPI, Rocky Mountain APT, and Historic Denver. Education, I'm only gonna talk a little bit about the University of Vermont, my undergrad, because Richard Little, our founding father of the town, was a fellow of the law. And then I went to school at CU Denver for graduate school in historic preservation and architecture. I won't talk too much about the design awards, but they were both related to additions to existing historic designated structures and sympathetic infill. Notable projects, I only want to talk about the Molly Brown Carriage House Restoration, simply because that was also through the State Historic Fund, where I worked with Ann McCleve. And Ann is a manager who oversaw Corbin Pugh, who came out to see us on the site. And she will be supervising the project. She's great, we've worked together before, she's very detail orientated, technical specifications, these types of treatments.
Not a fun bar, right?
Yeah. So this is a rendering I developed. Let's just start with how the existing Bemis House is kind of to the right, it's lightened. We'll talk about that a little bit more. We're doing interior rehabilitation. I say rehabilitation because that's the Secretary of Interior's treatment standards that allows us to be flexible for new uses, which is what we're gonna be doing here. The connector is very light. We're only engaging it as a breezeway. And in that respect, we didn't have to alter any windows on the exterior. And the Bemis House gets to remain intact. The community room, that we're calling it, is based on the same roof forms that you see on the Bemis House. There's three basic roof forms. There's gables, there's shed roofs in the rear. And on the right there, there's just a little hip addition. So those three very basic roof forms are what we did to incorporate into the new building so that it would relate and be sympathetic to it. You also will see that the addition is a little bit lower, which is very important. Has to be subordinate to the main house. It's also set back as far as we could, and it picks up on some of the existing details. So here you can see that more where the breezeway attaches. Those are two new doors, but on each side is an existing, are existing windows. So I picked the spot that did the least amount of alteration. When you walk into the new community room, it's a big open vaulted ceiling. It picks up on a lot of the geometry from the existing Bemis House. But you also see the strong vertical access that connects on the bottom, the west, and on the top, the east. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a bit. But essentially, you have a big open community room, a lot of light, and it connects the park to the War Memorial, Rose Garden, downtown, the whole front range. Everything will be wide open in that corner of the park. You'll be able to see Stern Park. We have, beyond that back porch there, there's also the yard. And we foresee an outdoor gathering space there as well. So here, I'll just touch on these primary architectural considerations. The new Bemis Community Room addition. So it clearly differentiates between the old and new, which is very important. Additions in historic preservation, you have to do it. But it references the existing house and form and details. I talked about that with the roof form. And the details, we have open eaves, we have exposed rafter tails, we have lapped siding. There's a lot of great details in what looks a little bit like a simple building, but there really is a lot to work with. The open floor plan and the whole vaulted ceiling concept is to create a strong sense of place, which is very appropriate for a community room. The front porch blends in with the surrounding neighborhood because we are a neighborhood in Stern Park of front porches. Almost every house has them. The Bemis House originally had a front porch, it was a front screen porch, but it was enclosed in later in the building's life. The front porch will have a welcome arms entry where the handrails and the steps are splayed out. Maybe we could go back one slide, Keith? Thank you. On the covered porch on the bottom there, we're gonna have the handrails open up. What that does is just accentuate the geometry, make you feel more welcome. And it sets up what would be the meet and greet kind of area in the covered porch there. You might meet someone at a graduation party or a Rotary meeting. And then they go through the front doors and the whole room would open up. And it would just be kind of delightful. And you might say, wow, this is really interesting here. And you can still see through to the park, which would be real nice. The back porch, as I said, engages with the park to the east. And the addition attaches as lightly as possible with a window wall breezeway. Now, on the existing Bemis House, the interior rehabilitation, I say rehabilitation because, as I said before, it allows us to make some changes. We can change some openings if need be for ADA accessibility, for example. The remodel work would include a new kitchen, new bathrooms. One would be ADA compliant, and we would increase the ADA accessibility on the main floor. The kitchen remodel would allow for catering service and food prep. And include the recommendations, this is really important. This is the 2006 Interior Assessment Report by Chris C. Faulkner. It's an excellent report. It's set up the 2008 exterior rehabilitations. And it's work that's unfinished, just goes room by room, mentioning what needs to be repaired and fixed. As far as historic fabric, plaster repairs, woodworking repairs, window trim. We would incorporate that. And we would also provide for the Rotary Club's program, programmatic needs and provide an office for Western Welcome Week.
Gene, what's the square footage of the new addition?
1848.
Okay.
So I can't go over, I have to keep it a little under. So I have to keep it shorter, I have to keep it set back, and I have to keep the square footage a little bit under to satisfy the covenant that we have with the State Historic Fund because of the 2008.
And it's a designated historic property, that's the reason. I'm a Littleton boy, but I went to college in LA. And it just, what we're trying to do here, it reminded me of the Gamble House in Pasadena, which is a beautiful, I think, what do you call that, craftsman style property? That is also rented out for community events or weddings, that kind of thing. So that's kind of what we're trying to do here with historic property in Littleton. In general, how do we want to use the property? The house, what we envision is absolutely keeping a office space for Western Welcome Week there. And we can keep her there on the same terms that you guys currently have her on with obviously a much better facility to work out of. We would probably have a Littleton Rotary Club office there. There's room for a conference room for smaller meetings. And then really kind of a catering kitchen where you can warm up food, prepare food to be served in the event center or the community room, as it were. And then there's an upstairs space in that house that, you know, we would intend to renovate. And there's a couple bedrooms that could be converted to suites. I don't know if you had a bridal party or something that wanted to prepare for a wedding in the Rose Garden, it would be a perfect facility for that. And then, of course, the programming for the community center. Ideally, we're looking for banquet-style seating for at least 75. So this would be not massive events. I would say medium-sized events, certainly larger weddings and such, it would not qualify for. But it would be enough to hold our weekly meetings, as well as smaller high school reunions, things like that. As well as, you know, we very much are aware that there may be organizations in town that are either nonprofits or don't have the resources, but need a space to hold an event. Our plan would be to either allow them to utilize the space pro bono or on a heavily discounted rate. The grounds, that house actually sits on a very large piece of property, all the way down the hill. the way down the hill, there's a really cool garage in the back that Jean told me has historic tiling on it. Um, we could really uh, you know, rehab the grounds and kinda turn that into a beautiful outdoor event space, as well as the, the community room. Um, and it just goes right down that hill to Stern Park Pond, it's, it's really one of the most picturesque spots in our city. So, yeah, that's, that's in general how we would intend to use it, and um, I think it's worth pointing out the meeting we had with the Colorado State Historical guy, and your team, where we walked the house, we talked about the idea, showed some drawings, and uh, I think the guy from the state was quite excited about it.
He was, uh, the, the idea there was to flush out any potential conflicts we might have with the State Historic Fund, and uh, we got some feedback, and four, four points he made, uh, maybe make the breezeway, uh, more glass in the breezeway, so it's light, the connection. Be careful not to go too tall, we were in that sketch, I'm only about eight inches below the roofline of the existing Bemis House, so I've gotta be careful there, and maybe try to set it back a little further. The front porch came right up to the line of the front of the Bemis House, and they wanna see some substantial setback, uh, so again, you're subordinate to the existing structure.
And before I move on, I do, do wanna point out, uh, Jim, cut him out of the PowerPoint, cause you know, we gotta keep things brief here, but I do have some overhead site plans that show the site from an overhead perspective, as well as show the uh, public parking, it's near the uh, the facility, so you can pass those around. Um, talking dollars, we, we don't know in a lot of detail yet, this is, some of these are guesses based on Jean's experience and, and my experience renovating a building in Littleton. Um, we're budgeting tentatively a hundred thousand dollars toward architecture, there'll be some engineering costs, the big one is construction, and we just took a wild guess at that, but it's probably gonna be.
Square footage.
Based on the square footage, at least one point five. Uh, landscaping, obviously furniture and equipment, all comes to around one point six, one point seven million, and that's just a guess, and as we move forward on this project, we'd wanna hone in those numbers. And then we looked at a very conservative estimate of what it would cost to operate the property, and what we think the revenue potentials are. And when I, again, when I say revenue, this is not a for-profit enterprise, this all goes back to the Littleton Rotary Foundation, which gives it back to the community. So um, pencils out, I think uh, we base the annual revenue potential on, looking at kinda what Hudson Gardens charges, other similar products in the city, and uh, obviously scaled it back from what they're charging, because this is run by a nonprofit group, and uh, I think we, we came out with numbers that work, so far at least. As far as where the money would come from, um, Rotary is obviously one of the most powerful fundraising organizations in the world, um, and uh, we could, we obviously could generate a lot of funds just from the Rotary universe. Um, I've already, just in quiet conversations with different folks, I've already been approached by a couple family foundations that have expressed an interest in contributing to just this kinda project. Uh, hopefully, there would be city and state grants that we could tap into. And then, for the rest, some sort of a very favorable loan, most likely, to get it done, maybe with a community bank, like Redstone Bank, which is, is establishing here and trying to get closer ties to the community. So that's the note we'd have to come up with, with the help of Rotary and uh, with the state and you guys as well. Um, and I think the general idea is a long-term lease, where, where the city would lease the property to Littleton Rotary for uh, a long enough period of time for it, for it to make sense for us to invest those kinda funds in rehabbing it. And um, that's as far as we've gotten so far.
And so, to follow on that, what we did is, you know, we, i- it was great to go through these discussions, have State Historic Fund out there, and you know, um, for somebody that's more on the facility side, you know, when Jean starts talking about the rooflines and all those things, the rest of us are like, I'm just gonna walk around the back of the house, check out what that looks like, and you know, and the, the historic folks are all like, yeah, it's awesome! So uh, what we uh, we did, we s- we talked about the idea of putting together an exploratory memorandum of understanding with the city and Rotary Club, that would kinda lay out these potential things, look at the lease, look at the options, put some more numbers to it, and do some exploratory work on that. This wouldn't be the first situation where the city did something like this, um, Geneva Lodge was uh, twenty-two years ago now, was basically in the same state that Bemis House is, maybe even a little worse, and uh, uh, it was a really nice raccoon house, it was that for a long time. And so, um, you know, it was a partnership with Fisher Architects, and a, and a, basically a zero-revenue lease to the city, um, in combination with um, their committed investment, um, and that obviously has worked out great. Um, we have a similar situation with a, a barn, a couple of barns that are tied to one of our open space areas, um, you know, so this is not something that we haven't done before. Um, and you know, when they approached us, it's, you know, it's a community asset, it's a very underutilized, and it's a, you know, an iconic property related to the city's history, and the ties to Rotary are very strong, so our goal was to come you and kinda share this concept, get some of your thoughts, and then if you're okay with it, we would proceed with continuing to do some more exploratory work.
Questions, Council?
I love it, I think it's, would've, would've, I'm with you, Zach, it's one of those properties that uh, I've had people approach me that wanna actually buy it, and I said, I don't think the city's in the mood to sell it.
Did you, did you sell it to someone?
I did.
We, we try, we tried, we explored that avenue, and it's not possible.
Yeah, yeah.
Reed would lock me up in, you know, historic preservation jail.
So I think this is a great first step, I, I, I love the presentation, I, you know, I, I, we need more facilities like this, and to preserve this particular home, uh, and kinda just have that sitting there, doing nothing. You know, it'd be nice to get it activated, just like we like to get your, your office reactivated, more of a community building. What's that?
Raccoon free.
I love it, I think you're on the right track.
Now, Western Welcome Week, they use that uh, storage area, don't they, in the back?
They do.
Yeah, they do. Cause I, I can see what you guys are doing here, that, that would also give them a little bit, well, aside from being a better office space, that would give them a place to celebrate with their volunteers, they have lots of volunteers.
Absolutely.
All sorts. I'm, I'm gonna pay for a move forward with it, I looked at your parking plan, there's a little bit of walking involved.
Yeah, we think there's enough, because after all, this is not that big of a facility.
Well, your maximum, what'd you say was a hundred?
Yeah.
And already, if you, you guys noticed, there's events all weekend, every weekend in that Rose Garden.
Yeah.
Who runs that Rose Garden? Is that Salisbury?
Yeah, company should have us in Salisbury.
Or do you, are you out there pruning?
No, you know what I mean pruning?
Haven't seen him yet.
We want something to be living there by the end of the season.
That's why I'm not out there pruning.
That's cool, I like it.
Yeah, so you're gonna keep that old building in the back?
Yes, you have to.
Okay, so, now, have you talked to HPP about this? You, you talked to Historic Preservation.
So, so we, our plan was to come and have this discussion with you, and then as part of those next steps, there'd be that, part of that exploratory discussion would be with HPP, with other community historic interests, with the community to get some feedback from them.
As if Council said, nope, they're not gonna.
So we wanted to come to you first.
Okay, so.
Before we went out and did that.
So this is the street view, right?
Yes.
Okay, and this is like this, is a roof up here?
That's the existing house, the, the one that's clear.
That's the existing Bemis House.
Doesn't look anything like it.
Doesn't look like it, it's just kinda a.
Okay.
It's just an outline of Bemis House.
Yeah, don't.
This thing is bugging me, so.
Don't worry about that, it's the existing house.
And in essence, you're putting a house next to the house.
Yeah.
That looks different than the house.
Well, it's, it's closely related, um, what we did was reverse the roofing hierarchy, so Bemis House is basically a large gable, right, with a long ridge, and then it also has some little sheds off the back and a little hip to the right, see that little uh, dining room thing? I reversed the hierarchies and made the major part of the addition the same pitch hip roof, and then added sheds and dormers off that of the same pitch.
So this is, this is, I wanna move this up, so I can see the Bemis House compared to this house.
You're looking at both.
You're looking at the Bemis.
That is the Bemis House on the right.
It's just, the addition is, the roofline is just rotated ninety degrees, basically, as you have.
So you're putting a house next to the house?
It's an addition next to the house, it's like an annex.
I, I like the idea of this not sitting empty and not being used, and it's historic, and that's all good. Where I'm struggling is you have this beautiful house on the hill, and now you're gonna house, add a house next to it, just, h- how, y- you're not making it seamless, you're making it different, you're setting it back. Doesn't it take away all the look and feel of the Bemis House? I, 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 I'm struggling, cause of this rendering.
Yeah, the strategy there is to engage the existing house as lightly as possible. You know, with the coloring, I'm making the new addition pop, so we can read that without the existing house grabbing all of our attention right now. It's, it's a technique you use in architecture, where you lightly outline the existing house and you focus on your, your addition.
For the render.
Well, it, it's just like, I'll say, now this additional house is set back.
Slightly.
And that, that's from.
Not very much.
From a historic preservation standpoint, that's what's required. You don't want any new, new addition or anything to overpower the existing structure, from a visual standpoint, right now.
I mean, it doubles, if, if that is actual, it's like doubling it, it's making it longer, it's not making this house up there, it doesn't look subservient, that's what I'm saying.
So Pam, I think we're getting more into the details than we need to be at this point here, I think, uh, it's, the general concept is what we're looking for.
We will see more detailed architectural renderings that show layout, color, inside, round.
I'm not against the concept, but, but either it's the renderings, or the fact that this house on the hill no longer, it, it looks like some, something totally different, and impacts the integrity of the whole thing, is what I'm struggling with, but I'm probably the only one.
So, if it satisfies the historical people in the city and at the state, is it, is that okay then?
I would defer to HPP and see what their input.
Cause the, the guy from the State Historical really seemed to be enjoying the concept.
I thi- I think part of it is just the rendering, I think when you see some more details from different angles, different, different, different ti- different aspect views, it'll, you'll get a better sense of the.
And I will do all three D renderings, the whole project, so we'll be able to get a better grasp on.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I, I'm not, I'd support going to, at least to HPP to get there.
Well, that's planned.
Yeah, that's fine, it's just, just Council support the idea of partnering with Rotary, um, to kind of have this more useful space with an addition onto it.
And you would be the one that would manage it, basically, in terms of, uh, who would access it for events?
Yeah, we, we have a pretty sizable group, and many of which ran businesses and such, so I, I think we could manage it. If not, if got too busy, we would probably employ a facility manager. It's probably worth pointing out that that new addition is, that's currently just empty lot, um, that, that is part of the property, so we're building on that empty lot. I would also point out that my neighbor just to the north of that addition built this kind of Miami Beach-looking monstrosity. Well, it is, it is a really cool house, but when you talk about what fits in the neighborhood.
It's not historic compared to the Bemis House, there's a.
But we're really trying to be faithful to the, the history of the neighborhood here, I think Jean's done a nice job of that, and good enough for Molly Brown, good enough for Littleton.
Jean can see it from his house, probably, so.
It would be considered sympathetic info.
Can I ask a bit of, of process questions, since I'm a little bit ignorant of our kind of historic property designation, but also like, record-keeping, so would there be a process in between the actual, like, construction, you know, obviously if things were to go well, this old loose board, would we be doing some sort of like, kind of historic documentation of the house property as it exists right now?
Yeah, we actually, we actually have a good chunk of that in the report that Jean referred to from '06, um, but we would also, that's a, a space where we'd get with cultural services and communications, and we, you know, I, this is a project where I would not only want us to document what's existing, the history of it in that background, but also document the process of getting from here to there, so that we can, you know, you've got that history of, as the process went, um, they kinda, we kinda did that in two thousand and eight, but you know, technology is different then, we're flying drones over houses and looking at them, so that would be part of the process, because I think it's uh, you know, it's, it's, it's telling a story at the same time, and I think that's really important.
Yeah, no, I, I'm in it, I'm in support of it, I think, again, the added benefits of the event space, uh, you know, partnering with an institution like Rotary, um, you know, having the capacity, the financial capacity to do the renovations necessary to preserve it, um, I don't think would be coming to, you know, it's, I'm not seeing it in our budget in the near future, so, I mean, I think all signs point to yes, and if there's that component of kind of that documentation, uh, you know, I would, yeah, absolutely.
I'd support the concept as well, seeing as we're really limited what we could do with that land, I mean, I'd love to see it for, you know, housing, but it's protected, so, um, this makes a lot of sense, given that Bemis was a founding member, and like, I think that really fits, and I agree with Councilmember Barr, that you'll taking over the fundraising and the renovation costs, so I think I'd happily be a partner.
Thank you.
Yeah, I totally support, I one hundred percent support it, I think it's great to activate that building, and do something well to support our community.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
What was that? She swallowed a sedative.
Likes the idea. There we go.
But um, I would ask, did you check into, I'm sure you have already, but aren't there federal funds? For, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's part of the, you know, that next exploratory stage is, you know, looking at every angle to bring, you know, we've, we've gotten pretty good at trying to bring outside funds into the community, and so that would be a, a big target in the partnership, is because a lot of times those grants would need to come through us, or say, the county, um, to, to bring to the project, so that's where our partnership leg would be, would be pretty important.
Um, I have a book, yeah, uh, yeah, I think, I, I like the idea here, that I've a couple, I don't wanna say if they're concerns, um, but with the, the financial aspect of that, was any of that city funding, um, city funds? Was it?
City funds.
Either you wanna put in, uh.
Yeah, I was just, I was just wanna make sure that, you know, was, that's, I didn't, you know, when I saw the.
A new lodging?
The loan, was that the city taking, or I just wanna make sure.
I did, I did put city and state grants.
Grants, yeah, that, but I was just, you know, I saw that, the loan, and trying to figure out where, is the city putting in a half a million dollars, which kind of would like.
Yeah, I didn't anticipate that. Try to create a win-win for everybody, and I think it's good for the community, cause we've raised money for community services, uh, as well as having a great new event center for community events. It's good for the park, because when there's not a lot of people around there, there's, there's been issues in Stern Park recently, I know we had to, we had to weld the doors shut on the bathrooms. So just more activity, more investment in the park, I think will help a lot. Um, it's great for Rotary, obviously, um, and uh, I think Ed Bemis would probably support it, so I think it ticks all the boxes.
That's a big statement, but.
Well, I mean, he was a big time Rotarian.
Yeah, yeah, he's channeling.
So um, if you guys, if there's anything we've overlooked, though, I would, I would love an opportunity.
No, I mean, I, no, I, I, yeah, I like the idea, I mean, I just, the, the only other issue is the, kind of the perception of city favoring one organization over the other, um, you know, when you, you mentioned Optimus, Kiwanis, other, other groups, um, to make sure that it's not just.
You can help raise funds for this.
Yeah, yeah, but I want you to be a part of it, that.
We're not, we're not selective.
And it's also with, uh, since it's still city property, city will still own it, um, the city will be able to use it for events.
Yes.
And, I mean, we would hope free of charge, not to.
Get into the wheat.
Figure out how to.
I know, but I'm just saying this.
I'm sure that can be arranged, so.
Yeah, and I can have the first wedding there, if we're gonna get in the wheat.
City-state grants are not necessarily city grants, or?
It's just, we'll, we gotta go down this.
We don't know, grants of some sort, yeah.
So, since I asked the question.
Generally, cause we own the property, we're gonna have to apply for the grant, or be a co-applicant.
Yeah. No, we'll, we'll just have to see, I mean, that's part of the exploratory process. So, since I asked you, since I polled you at the beginning, how many folks have been inside the house, for those of you who have not, just get in touch, we'll be more than happy to get you over there. I mean, the good part is, just a warning that when you go upstairs, the mayor pro teminai will be fine, you tall people have a problem walking through the upstairs.
And the mayor.
That's right. Well, I, you know, thank you for pointing that out, so. You might have to go in groups, so you don't hit your head, um, so appreciate that.
Still raccoons.
So yeah, general consensus of continuing to move forward the process.
Thank you, appreciate it, thanks you guys for joining us today, thanks.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thanks, guys.
Glad we did that, for your compensation, especially.
I'm gonna switch out, uh, presenters and staff here, next up, we have, uh, who's coming up, Samma?
Oh, Tracy.
Tracy? All right.
Thank you.
Item B is, uh, kind of a discussion, uh, Council compensation, I know I've.
Incoming.
Talked with staff about it, I know Councilmember Millman has, Councilmember Grove sent me things, I know this is, you know, kind of a topic that.
I know I've talked with staff about it, I know Councilmember Milam has, Councilmember Grove sent me things, I know this is, you know, kind of a topic that. Councils don't necessarily like to talk about, uh, you know, compensating themselves here, um, although.
It's not really us.
It's not really us, I was not gonna get to it, you know, future councils and, um, you know, as I've been chatting with. Other mayors and councilmembers from around the region, I think it's a lot of cities are taking a look at this, um, trying to figure out how to make. Some equitable compensation. To get people involved, there's, you know, talking to people about running for council here, but I can't run because of volunteer positions, basically, so. So Jim and Tracy put together some information about kind of what council compensation looks like in the region.
So my quick intro following on, uh, uh, the mayor is, I know, uh, Tracy and her. Her team had been doing some looking and have kind of pulled together, uh, competitive, uh, council compensation. Uh, information for for generally comparable sized cities. Uh, we also wanted to just look, just look around and just kind of, uh, report on a couple of leading trends and even some larger cities. May or may not be applicable to this council's interests or what might be right for us, but I I know Tracy included a couple of those. Um, you'll note that there are some benefits, uh, trends for our councils, and I know Tracy will talk about some of those things. Those are, uh, are emerging more, I know, over the past five or ten years, so with that, I know we haven't properly seen our. Human Resources Director Tracy Looker at many of our meetings, although she has been supportive on a number of projects that she's been, that. Council has seen since she's been here about six months then.
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, I'll ask Tracy to just provide an overview of the the data, that's really what we have for you tonight, we don't have any recommendations. Because it's entirely up to council what's appropriate for council compensation and what feels right, so now let's turn it over to Tracy.
Well, thank you for the introduction and good evening, council, I have not joined you at a study session yet, so it's great to be here, appreciate your time. Um, as Jim mentioned, we're here really just to share some data and some of the data that we've compiled on this topic and. Get some input from you all on our next steps, so. I am planning to provide an overview of our data and our market analysis details and then some of our data findings as well. So as a quick overview, we generally use employers' council for our compensation data, um, some of their surveys do not include. Specific roles, and so city council is not, uh, part of their salary surveys and along with some other elected officials, so we. Did have to look at some other, uh, sources for this data, so what you're gonna see tonight in the form of the data is mostly from. The Colorado Municipal League Salary Survey, which includes salary and benefits. In that survey, we did narrow down the findings, um, from fourteen cities who you can see listed there on this slide. Who have part-time council with populations between twenty-five thousand and a hundred and twenty-five thousand within Colorado. So as mentioned for the market analysis, we did use that CML, uh, compensation survey data as the market comparison. There's various compensation methodologies, um, as considerations that do vary by city. And may include things such as the Consumer Price Index or CPI, the area median income or AMI. Or parity with staff, which, um, is generally matched to those salary surveys that I mentioned previously. So there's not a set standard and, uh, pay practices vary by city. So from here, I'm gonna dive into our data findings and we will look at salary and benefits separately. So the memo included in, uh, my packet materials includes a lot of the raw data, but on these slides, I'm going to just. Provide you some of the high level summary, and when you see the word market used as a reference, that's as generally what we define as actual average.
Of those cities on the, were on that slide a few minutes ago.
Yes, yep. Um, so starting with the data findings of those fourteen comparators that we talked about, I'm gonna start with the mayor here. We found that we are six percent behind market or nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars annually. With the mayor pro tem, we are seventeen percent above market or two thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars annually.
Good, I really am.
Uh, and for a council, we are twenty-four percent above market or two thousand, um, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Um, one thing I I do want to point out, and I will go over some of the considerations is you remove even one city and these percentages fluctuate quite a bit, so we can look at that a little bit further as well.
This is just salary.
Just salary, correct, we are going to move over to benefits next here. So starting with the mayor again, uh, for health benefits, thirteen of our fourteen allow participation in health insurance plans. And three of those contribute to the premiums in some manner. For retirement, eight of the fourteen allow participation in retirement plans with two cities contributing to contributions. For mayor pro tem, we have data, um, from eight of those fourteen cities provided, so it's a little bit smaller data set here. And seven of the eight allow participation health insurance plans with one, uh, city contributing to premiums in some manner. And retirement, seven of eight cities allow participation in retirement and two of those contribute, uh, to contributions. Moving on to council, uh, thirteen of the fourteen cities allow participation health insurance plans and three contribute to premiums. And then retirement, four of fourteen allow participation retirement plans with two contributing to contributions. So separately, I did include a sampling of some larger cities in here, these three exceed the hundred and twenty-five thousand population that the others were, um. Under that threshold, those include Aurora, Fort Collins and Colorado Springs. So of note on these, um, all three of these cities have full-time mayors. Fort Collins Council is considered full-time and Aurora and Colorado Springs are considered part-time.
With Fort Collins, I saw that, I saw some like marketing of it being full-time, but they set the A, the the salaries at that because they said that was the time put into it, so they said a council member is basically a fifty percent. Employee, and that's why they were set that, so I saw, I I know, I saw some of the things that are full-time, they're not really full-time though, even though they're considered full-time.
That that's a good point, I did confirm with them, there are considerations on that, I saw a similar, um, deviation there, but, um, that's a good call up on Fort Collins. So going through these briefly, um, Aurora offers full health and retirement benefits to council. Their methodology includes reviewing council salary annually based on the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers or the CPIU. Uh, Fort Collins offers healthcare-related benefits to council and their methodology is based on the area median income. Which was a result of a ballot measure that went into effect this past January. And Colorado Springs does not currently offer benefits to council and we do not have current information on any methodology that they're using.
Other thing on this slide is Aurora and Fort Collins have weak mayors, Colorado Springs is a a strong mayor, so there's a difference in that, so. Strong mayor is a steel compared to a city manager, looks like.
Fort Collins, we, council is considered full-time at thirty-seven thousand.
Well, I think there could be some discrepancy there, that's something we might look into.
Is what?
The Fort Collins City Council people are full-time at thirty-seven thousand here?
I don't think so.
No, they're not, I know that was the pitch of that is to pay them more, but they're not, they don't have off, they're not like a full-time employee, so.
Yeah, it's not.
And even Aurora's council isn't. Full-time.
Correct, well.
They're not full employees, they have other jobs, so, and either Aurora mayor is also a.
I think to be looking at these three doesn't really do us any good, simply because they're not even comparable to Littleton.
And are their council numbers the same, like they have seven people serving, I mean, council?
Aurora's got a bigger council, Fort Collins is, I think, the same size.
Yeah, and that's in the information she provided on the comparable ones.
They're a bit bigger.
That's okay.
Yeah, sorry.
I did not include that data, but I can certainly follow.
Yeah, but you did include it on the other ones, though, that we are comparing with.
Yes, those other fourteen, I do. So a few, uh, considerations to highlight, this was mentioned earlier, but, um, city charter states the monthly salaries of council members shall be set by ordinance, but shall not be increased during the current term. Of council members enacting such ordinance. And there are a few other, um, data considerations I want to call out. Our sample size is limited based on that CML data survey, so that is one consideration, um. Some of this data also may be outdated, you'll see on the memo that was attached, there's a column on the data that indicates the last time that data was updated and. And a few instances, instances, yeah, it can date back to twenty fourteen, so, um, there could be some additional research we could certainly do there. And some of this data, um, we did find some inconsistencies in the details, so some cities, for instance, may have provided information for the mayor, but not for. Um, council, an example of this would be Broomfield, if you kind of compare those charts. And, um, finally, just a few questions for your considerations as far as our next steps go. This is really around whether or not you wish to update, um, compensation, uh, consider health benefits, retirement benefits, or if there's any other information or insight. That would be helpful to you all.
Council, who wants to start?
I'm good, I'm good with the way we are.
You're good not changing anything, is that what you said?
Same, yeah.
I actually, I'm kind of wanting to explore this more because I look at it, now that we've changed how our mayor is elected, it's not city council members deciding who's gonna be. It's the citizens of Littleton, I think that's elevated that position more than what it's been in the past. And considering all of the the regional engagement, um, the partnerships that are being formed. The more forward-facing in front of the public that the mayor is. You know, it's, this is not gonna be a job somebody's gonna have full-time unless they're retired, right, this is just, it's extra money in their pocket if they will. But, um, I just, I think it's, I I think we do need to look at it, and when was the last time that we updated compensation for?
Twenty fifteen.
November of twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen, okay, so up on, you know, eight years.
I'd be okay if you wanted to take the mayor up to market average, um.
And pull mayor pro tem down to market, I think that's totally fair.
And I I can leave everything the same, but if we want to bring up, you know, additional grant for the mayor, no problem doing that.
Yeah, I'm same, I'm same.
But for the most part, I I didn't get into this for, this, I didn't even know there was a salary, so. So I didn't get into this, you know, and I don't think most people do.
No, I think, I'd like to maybe offer an idea at least, I I, um, I think the council and the mayor pro tem, uh, salaries, you know, can. Change or or be adjusted to market rate however we decide, I feel like the. Position of the mayor, however, you know, as we see more cities trending to it becoming, um, a a more of a full-time position. Yeah, we are not the same size as the Aurora's, uh, and the Fort Collinses, but even as a halftime position, I think that opens. Um, the opportunity for those who do not, who are just not as independently. Able to essentially afford to do all the responsibilities of the mayor. And again, this is no offense to our current mayor, but like you are able to fill fulfill those responsibilities on the salary you're currently paid. I feel like making it a halftime position would increase the ability for those outside. Of a more privileged sphere to be able to embark on that journey, so I'd like to explore seeing what we can do to. Move a mayor closer to at least a halftime position as a first step.
I'm I'm gonna side with Patrick on this, and I I think, yeah, I can see giving the mayor a bit more, it's a busy job, and I. For someone who's working full-time, it is a difficult thing to make all meetings, I know I sure did. Uh, and I don't think you're working, this time of year, I don't even know if you're working part-time or full-time, but it, but I know you're working full-time on the mayor's stuff. But as far as council, uh, compensation, I think it's the state's same, but I I I could see boosting the the mayor a bit. But as far as anybody when they they run for council, yeah, they're they're not in it for the money, I mean, you're in it too so you can do something.
Oh, sure, I don't think anyone's in it for the money, but I think it also, it, people don't do it because they can't, I mean, I think it actually puts people off, so I think it's inequitable. The only people that can do it, not for the money, can do it, and I think that's, I think that could be a problem.
Yeah, I would agree, because then that's.
Looking at the average, you know, I think we're doing pretty good, obviously, you know, again, aside from the mayor pay, uh, I think. We're doing pretty good, you know, compared to the cities of our size, you know, I would. You know, I think we should look at cities right at our size, you know, Parker, Inglewood, uh, who else?
Well, also cities that aren't growing, I mean, like, the comparison that you gave is, I mean, most of those cities are growing except for Inglewood, Golden.
Yeah, I don't know how big Golden is, but I mean, to me, I.
It's a little, it's a little smaller than us, but. I mean, I, I think it goes to the, to, at least for me, the larger conversation of our. Elected officials, service-based, you know, people, are they, um. How do we get more people involved in that, and how do we make sure people are, uh, you know, fairly compensated, you know, not making lots of money doing this, but. Um, you know, we wanna, we want to have people at this table that represent the community that can able to do it, that want to do it. Um, and looking at the 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 market rate, you know, frankly, I think the market for elected officials sucks, I mean. Pardon my language, but I mean, it's not a a market you really want to compare it to, and so, you know, my personal take is I would love to see Littleton, you know. Set the market, you know, I mean, I've been keeping track of my hours and I think it ranges between sixteen to forty a week, probably an average of about, you know, twenty, twenty-four a week. Um, it's a lot, it's a lot, and I mean, and all of you do, I mean, I'm, this didn't want to have this conversation for just the mayor's salary, but I think for council, and I think. You know, my guess is, you know, when people talk about how how much time does it take to be on council, you know, the idea is usually. Ten to fifteen hours a week, I I mean, that's, you know, but it's, we all know it can be a lot more than that, too.
And with increased pay, I think also does come some increased accountability, if we're paying the mayor, like, for example, a halftime salary. My expectation as a resident would that be, would be that the mayor would be available and attending these meetings and and doing the work at a halftime. It half the time of a week, um, and I know you're doing this, it, you know, forty hours a week at thirteen grand or whatever it was a year. Yeah, sixteen grand a year, I mean, I think by increasing pay, we can also increase expectation as to what the mayor's job really is. Um, in terms of their attendance on some of these regional meetings, planning, citizen outreach and engagement, and I think we can ask that of a. Of a mayor or even any of the other council members if we compensate them for it and hold them accountable to it.
Well, in the case of the mayor position, it does take more hours than a council, definitely.
Oh, for sure, yeah, that's why I started there.
But the only person that can do it is is not someone who works, you know. Forty-some hours already a week, forty-plus hours a week, uh, it's it's, if you're gonna be mayor, you have to be available for a lot of stuff.
But if it was a point.
When I was mayor, I was able to to arrange my schedule.
Have to have a flexible job, because you're having meetings during the day, and if you're expected to be in a job nine to five, and it's wrong.
Right. Yeah, I was very flexible. Right, and and I think Cal right now, at least right now, is able to manage his time that way, but anybody that comes in this job, they have a full-time job, they're, it's it's gonna be very difficult for them, and they know that going in.
And it's the reason to to increase that compensation.
I think that's why.
But that doesn't change it, I mean, if somebody has a flexible job, they're not gonna be, you know, want to run for mayor because of money. But if someone has a forty-plus hour a week job, that doesn't change it because you're still, I mean, how many meetings you go to at night and day, I mean, you you, it's across the board, it's not. If you have a job that's not flexible, you should not run for mayor, that's just the way it is, we can't make it, we can't. Make it available for everybody because that's just the way life is.
We could change that, though, like a point, like, I think that a point five FTE, like, that actually could be something you could manage. Within like a social service job or something like that or another government job, like you could do that.
Or if you're just driving Uber's. Where's this money coming from?
Part-time.
I mean, we passed three A, you know, but and we were able to do that by cutting. I mean, we passed three A, you know, but we were able to do that by cutting, councils were able to cut the budget. Ever since three A passed, we're finding ways to spend money, new ways to spend money. And I think that's what we're doing here. I, I'm in favor of the mayor getting more because that isn't, it's a busy.
The savings that we've had by not having annual increases, like, you know, staff gets every, every year or most years annual increase. Council hasn't had anything for, you know, since twenty fifteen.
Looking at that, we're ahead of, we're ahead of everybody.
Well, and I wanna take a step back and with the, the slide before, you don't have to go back to it, but with, you know, we can't raise our salary for anyone in their current term. What I would propose is we push this off until, if, if we decide to do something, push it off to go into effect in twenty twenty, November of twenty twenty-five. And so all of us have.
Cycles.
All the seats have had a cycle of, of an election there. So that would also be, everyone's compensation goes up at the exact same time. It's not, people on that council aren't voting on it. It's not coming up this November because theoretically, we could do it to set it for, starting this November for the three new seats. And then there would be an equity of, of council makeup of compensation.
So I, I would go even a step further and say anyone currently on this council wouldn't receive those new rates if they ran again.
No, I'm not saying that because you have an election.
I'm saying that, I'm saying that, yeah.
You could be re-elected for three terms.
Right, and I would say you should have gone to a bracket.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying.
I'm saying that, but.
Yeah, she said, I think that's too long.
Offering that is, yeah.
But I mean, we're still, like, I still think there's a conflict of, of interest.
There's an election, there's an.
My opinion, that's my opinion.
Uh, like, I see.
If you get elected.
Or you get re-elected. Yeah, and so, and so, does everyone, you have a slightly different opinion, but wait till twenty twenty-five, don't even think about anything for this November.
That's fine.
At the very minimum, yeah.
That's a good point there.
And so there seems to be general consensus on doing something, not exactly what. I mean, what I would like is.
Jerry and Pat, bring the mayor up. It's a very demanding job, I'll tell you that. Takes a lot of time and make Mayor Pro Tem maybe a little bit more in line. I mean, I don't even wanna calculate my dollar per hour because it, it, it's not a job. It's a mega-volunteer job. You're doing it because you wanna contribute to the community, I think.
But then if you don't think of it as a job, people don't, you know, if you make it as a job, people put into it more and.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, you, whenever, if you wanna take payment hours, it's just, it, that's not, yeah, I guess.
It's the, I'm not talking about the, you know, the payment hours, I'm just thinking the mindset of the position.
Is, yeah, like a mega-volunteer job.
But I think the, the, what's being proposed might be to make it beyond a volunteer job, make it a job-job. As in, as, as someone earns a salary, you can hold them accountable to that salary rather than just saying, oh, they're a volunteer, so they don't show up to things, so they don't.
We're held accountable by our citizens and, you know, by each other to some extent. I, I, I think we're held accountable, and I don't think a higher pay would change that. In other words, if you make twelve thousand or fourteen thousand, I don't think the expectations would change.
But if like we're opening it up, point-five FTE at marketable FTE rate, that could be.
It could make it erratic there.
What I was gonna suggest is have mayor position be point-five, and I, I actually like the Fort Collins thing, that the AMI set, set it in that so it goes up or changes, whatever it is. I know a lot of councils, rather than set a, set twelve hundred dollars a month in ordinance, they set it to, tied to inflation or the, I like the, the percent of AMI was interesting. And then I was gonna say have council be, I was gonna say twenty-five percent, I don't know, I mean, I'm open. I think that sets it at a standard, you know, it's, it's a point two-five FTE job, people think about it.
But then with the reality is, let's say it's fifty thousand a year, you're working already forty hours a week. So now you're accountable, so now you're working, you know, triple that. Then you can't get another job because you are, the expectations are so high, so now you're working fifty percent AMI.
Well, the expectations change for.
I think you're still working many hours overtime, working, donating.
I don't, I don't think the money's gonna make people work any more than they would anyway. It's just a matter of compensation.
Yeah.
And it gives, and opens the door to other people that may not, may not even think about running for council because they just can't do it. But maybe with this little bit of a compensation boost, it does open the door to other people that maybe are not.
What other people?
Like people that are not retired, one second. I don't know.
I would love to go to halftime in my regular job and do this job halftime. Like, that would be nice if I could do it and get to vote that time to it.
That's your choice. You wanna work halftime or half-time?
I totally get it. I, it's, yes, it's obviously my choice, but what I'm saying is that if that option were offered to others, I think you would actually find a more diverse applicant pool of people who could make ends meet.
What, is there a problem with it now?
This is something that there's ten people out of forty-eight thousand that wanna serve on council every other year. I mean, that doesn't seem like a lot of people that wanna.
But council always has enough people running for, we don't have a shortage of candidates ever. And when I ran, you know, most of my time my council, I worked seven hours a week, I, you know.
I would say we have a shortage of representation of the city. A shortage of representation of the city. And I think rather than try to be exclusionary and say, oh, only you can do this, only if you do this, let's try to bring as many people that can, you know, they're still make the decision if they wanna do it or not, but.
How is it exclusionary? Anybody that wants to run can run. Nobody's being excluded. And this thing with everybody has to be equal, it's just not gonna happen.
Said everyone had to be equal, I just said it be.
Well, we're trying to make it more equitable here, so other people, I don't even know who these other people are. If someone wants to run for city council.
Exactly. You don't know who they are because they're not at this table.
Run for city council, what, you're, then, but, but you're just making something up there. Oh, there's these people out there. We never have a shortage of candidates. We always have.
We have. You've run unopposed before. I mean, it's not like.
What, would you run against me?
I thought about it. I thought about it.
That was only once.
That's unusual. There's usually, plenty of candidates.
Yeah, I had people, I didn't, I only did that the one time, but yeah, that was.
But it's happened.
That happens when, you know, you get a candidate or a, someone who's running for reelection, people are, oh, okay, you know, that's just the way it is. But, you know, we can't make this so that anybody can run, you know, because we gotta be equitable, so then.
I'm sorry, we're anybody.
Where do you want us again? Where you wanna be equitable, where does it start?
Anyone can run.
It's equitable, it starts.
Just opening it up a little bit. It's not equitable, you're just opening it up.
Show me where it runs out.
I think we've got a philosophical, like, debate here, and I don't think that's what we need to be discussing right now.
But you're saying it opens it up, so I, I don't see where it's.
I hear, what you're saying is you don't think it needs to change, that there's a problem in that, definitely.
Other than for the mayor.
Okay. So.
Get that, totally get that.
So, City Manager, what are you hearing?
You know, I think a summarizer. You know, I'm hearing a slight majority of council members with interest in the only, well, the increasing the mayor compensation. The specific that's been thrown out there, I'll look for some consent at, at least with that, that majority, would be point-five of individual AMI.
Point-five FTE, well, that's tied to AMI?
I ju, well, I think FTE could be part of the rationale, but I'm hearing that in terms of what the number would be, it's the point-five. Half of whatever.
AMI is.
AMI is.
Oh, half, okay. We're saying the same thing in two different ways, yeah.
I don't know what AMI is.
A median income.
I know, but what's the AMI in Littleton?
Right. Kathleen?
Fifty percent.
Pardon me, do you happen to know, or I guess I should look to Tracy first if you did the research.
I have, I do have some of it.
AMI.
Uh, so AMI, what I found, um, it's based on the Department of Housing and Urban Development. They released that annually. It's based on region, so you generally can't drill down. You generally can't drill down to a specific city, but in our kind of Dender metro region, it's a hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred dollars.
That was a, that was a household.
That sounds high.
That's a hundred percent of AMI?
That's household.
That's a household. That's household. We can, we can figure that number later.
That's what I'm saying, I'm hearing.
So.
Yes, sorry, it is household.
Individual AMI, which I think is, is gonna be sixty-five to seventy-ish.
Yep. So can I propose that, so you, you said there was, council said yes, consensus to update the mayor, increase the mayor? Mayor Pro Tem, what are you gonna go through?
You should shift it to market.
I was gonna say increase it. I, I think we should increase everyone's.
Not hearing.
Can we, can we look at both scenarios? Do you want two ordinances brought to you? No, I don't. I'm just saying, so we have the data in front of us.
Well, and one thing that we don't do that is very costly to the city and a, a big benefit is health benefits and retirement.
We'll get to that.
Okay, we're just doing compensation.
We're just doing the compensation right first question.
Just wanted to check this conversation. So I guess I'm not hearing yet consensus among seven for a mayor, pro tem or council.
I'm okay leaving.
So leaving.
Them and council, same.
I kinda wanna see the data. See the data. I wanna see comparisons.
You wanna leave it? You were okay with leaving it?
Adjusted back down to market is what I see.
Increase mayor, lower pro tem.
And then lower council even more?
No, 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 leave council.
We were twenty-four percent above market.
You were twenty-four percent above market, so if we're tied to market, I think that's terrible.
I would, I would suggest, not to complicate, but I think Tracy's point at the start is valuable. I don't, I don't wanna put too much stock in the averages, unless you wanna really kind of, really buy into those, those cities. Because I think as you pull one out, it does change the math, so I think we might wanna look at either the AMI standard or we could look at more of the detail, which I think was in the report, at those cities, if you wanna kind of look at a, a number to see where you're comfortable. Is that true?
It is true. An example would be Longmont offers council, I think, a thousand dollars per year. So you pull them out and suddenly that twenty-four percent above market drops to sixteen. So those numbers can change quite a bit, so I do agree with maybe looking at the.
Along, along the lines of AMI, the mayor just, just suggested the twenty-five percent, I think, for council. I don't know that you had.
No, I was just, that was just, I'm thinking hours. I, I'm not thinking in terms of FTE, but I'm just thinking of the.
You could do thirty for.
Would median be better, midpoint better than average? Because average gets thrown off so much.
Just see what we have accessible in the survey.
It's the weird thing, it's such a small sample size, too. There's, I mean, so many more. And then some of them haven't updated them in thirty years, some of them have updated, are, are currently in the process of updating them.
I think tying into AMI actually makes a lot of sense. I think the hard part is just figuring out where to tie, to what percentage of AMI to tie it to is. So maybe if we had the AMI in front of us, we could.
We could bring this back. I mean, it's, it sounds like, based on the, the November, the, the, November twenty-five, we know you wanna take some action now so that there's a lot of clearance time. At the same time, we probably have time for follow-ups.
Sure, I think we have, yeah, I would like to take action before, th- this council, in the next few months here, so we can push it off.
Yeah, I like the, the schedule you, you have, yeah.
Okay, so, where you're clearing compensation, health benefits, do you wanna consider, and the idea with health benefits, there was, you know, do we wanna have an option for council, whether it's, and the weird thing is, we can determine, we could say, yeah, we want the city to give us all a hundred percent benefits. Probably not, you know, reasonable or rational to that, but do we want it to be open to us? And then we can talk about, is it all council contributions or does the city contribute?
Just one point, I think, to clarify, the common way, if there is a common way that cities are approaching that with contribution, it might be at the part-time employee level, right, right.
I'm okay leaving council out of it.
Me too.
Just compensation.
I'm okay. I mean, if people need it, I, I get it, but I'm okay leaving it out also.
I guess I kinda wanna see what the numbers, I, I feel like I'm kind of wandering in the dark in terms of the actual cost, so I'd like to at least see what the cost is.
Yeah, well, I never wanted the first, we had with Tracy, we, we, one of them was basically if, if you got a family health plan, you basically, you owe money to the city to get on the health plan, and so, yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of statewide options for healthcare, public healthcare provision, so this one's not as critical to me. But again, I'd still like to at least see what the fiscal ramification would be, honestly.
So based on the part-time rates, there are a couple tables in the memo, the materials. So table five and six outline the employer cost to the city, what we are paying for part-time employees right now. It kind of gives you the range of if you were to elect into employee only or into a family plan, what that looks like per month. And then we also have council costs outlined. So if council were to pay a hundred percent of the plan cost, what that looks like in those two plan options.
About a year or a month or what is it?
Looks like month.
Monthly for table six.
Yeah.
And the ranges are outlined annually.
So right, you would end up owing money to the city.
Yeah, right, but.
Like employees do.
Well, no, I mean, net, we owe money. We're like, you, you get your council compensation and you still owe more money on top of it.
Yeah, it exists.
I don't, I don't think any single staff member makes less of, you know, gives.
You're right.
They do, they've got a.
I don't know why they're working here.
Yeah, I get it.
That's true. It's tough. So do, do you wanna consider help? Let's just try to keep this quick here.
Yes, I do. I think it's interesting.
I would like to consider it.
Yes, Pam?
Yes.
Yes, I'm a yes. No, yes, yeah, no.
So we'll bring back more options. Bring that back as well.
Retirement benefits.
No.
Yes or no?
No.
Jerry?
I'm no.
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 Pam?
Doesn't matter.
No other retirement option?
I want automobile allowance.
I think the fourth question is, yes, we've just prevented some additional information, insight that we would like to.
Yeah, I'm green, I need a Tesla.
I wanna Tesla.
Come back in a month or two.
Yeah, can we get our automobile allowances? We get an automobile, right?
A Tesla. There's a.
We need a council car.
Council car.
Waggon.
Just get one, take it on road trips.
Share.
Yep.
I think we got that direction.
I want it to be a Woody, one of those Woody wagons. Cool, the surfboard.
All right, so everyone, you'll go in that direction?
Thank you. No conclusions, thank you.
No, we'll have, we'll, we narrowed some of the information, so. Any other, uh, we can get to the score to say, you got eight, man. Update a report?
Uh, yes, Mayor. I do wanna just raise the issue with council that's kind of come up in the last couple days. I'm aware that councils receive more emails than staff about puppy mills and the specter of potentially taking some action locally through an ordinance to potentially ban activity. It could be very narrow, could be broad. I might even turn it over to the city attorney at this point. And I don't think I gave him much time to think about what the options might be. But I think the question tonight, we don't have to even get that far into it, is since it is, since I've heard from a couple council members that there is some interest in potentially taking some action, I wanted to just hear from council, if you'd like, us or him, to think about what those actions could be. And, you know, there are, I, I will say that even in some brief conversation, there are some unintended consequences that could come from this, and the challenge would be in probably narrowly defining a prohibition, if that's council's desire, that would not affect other, maybe retailers who are in the same market, but might not be, for instance, selling, selling pets, but could be selling equipment, pet food, or other things. Anyway, I don't know, Reed, if, if you have any thoughts at the moment.
Yeah, I mean, just to summarize it for anyone who's still watching at home. Council received a number of emails regarding potential retail pet store opening over off of Bellevue and Prince. I believe the name is called to be Puppy Palace. They are going to do retail, my, our understanding, retail pet sales and grooming and whatever else the future months come with, owning a pet store. So I know the mayor's received at least a dozen emails from concerned citizens, so yes, there is a, there is a location here in the city. No, the city doesn't have a ban on it. I will tell you that this comes around pretty frequently. I think some of council will remember, maybe a couple years ago, we had someone talking to us. Well, at the time, we didn't have any stores within the city of Littleton that actually sold pets, so it wasn't really a big deal for us. I know Colorado Springs has entertained an ordinance as of last month that was shot down. The city of Lafayette, I wanna say last week, kind of put one to the side. It was brought forward and then they just decided to table it while they discuss it a little bit longer, so it makes the rounds. There's not a lot of jurisdictions that have done. You know, retail pet bans, um, I think maybe Berthet has, and Brackenridge, or maybe some mountain town, but it's. A pretty small number, and so, you know, based on your direction, cause we've heard a couple of folks that are very interested in, you know, perhaps. Limiting this, um, do you want the city to take a look into, you know, one, is this a good idea for the city of Littleton? There's a lot of information we don't have about this particular retailer, to be honest, I don't know where they're getting pets, how many pets they're selling. Um, you know, for those folks who advocate against these retail pet stores, they talk about kind of the puppy mills that are, you know. Unlicensed somewhere out in Nebraska, that are all put in cages, and, um, kinda the inhumane aspect of it, but. I have no idea where this retailer is getting their pets, or how many they're gonna have, so it, it might be a little premature, they have applied for a sales tax license, they have been granted one. It's my understanding that they're supposed to be opening in August, but I don't have any other information on it, but I can certainly look into it if that's the direction council gives us.
I think we should, so the question is, should we look into it more?
Yes, please.
Yes, yes?
It's memorable, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's only fair.
I'll go with whatever, I mean, everything else is.
We just need a little more information, because we're we're kinda stepping into, where do you get your product, and we're gonna evaluate your product. And if you get a product from a breeder, we're okay with that, and that's assuming that the breeder is in better, is more humane than a puppy mill, and. I don't know that.
Just need information, right, correct?
I don't know, maybe that's true, but maybe not.
Information and then options, uh, also let the city go.
He think about the bigger retail stores, Petco, Petsmart, none of those, they do not sell pet, they do not sell dogs and cats, and there's.
They often partner, they partner with a shelter.
Chicken milk.
I mean, I guess.
They do partner with shelters, but they're not buying them from.
So when I say we don't have retail stores, we don't, we have, you know, South Platte Humane Society, which is within the city of Littleton, which, you know, for an adoption fee. You know, they're technically selling vets, I don't know, could we bring some of those experts to?
So right now, so right now, a lot of this outreach has been done through citizens emailing, engaging with all of us, it hasn't been.
Don't actually live in Littleton, too.
Well, who ha- it's, so it hasn't been a transparent space, so I think it's important to hear from some of those folks, and I believe one wanted to do like a citizen appearance. And speak and advocate for it, I think that makes a lot of sense, and then to come prepared to be able to, to then take it from there, what are you really asking?
They have three minutes, anybody can come.
Well, actually, a scheduled citizen appearance.
Do that, too?
Yeah.
You know, would that, uh, contact you're thinking of have some expertise, or more than?
I don't know, I had someone.
Yeah, we don't want, we're not gonna have just some random citizen come down and talk ten minutes about, about that.
I don't think it's a random citizen, I think it's one who's really concerned about something, and I think they have a right to talk about something they're gonna.
So I think we have.
Look, it's not transparent, right, like, we have, there's these conversations needed, like, happen in the public, so either maybe they come and speak to public comment, or.
We would do that outreach, and we would, you know, find a way to do the research, find credible.
We'd want the prayer to come in here and defend their business, too, this is the AKC.
I think I'm hearing interest tonight, and Reed, we could kinda talk about how and what that would look like.
Yeah, we're not doing a ban, we're not doing a moratorium, we're, we're not doing anything right now, we're just trying to get a feedback of what, what's going on, what options could potentially.
We don't have enough information to make a decision.
Right.
I I feel.
Yeah, I agree.
I just learned about it today.
Yeah, well, yeah, we just started getting emails about it.
No.
They're wonderful.
Anything else, city manager? Do you have any further, uh, updated report? No? Alright, well, nine fifty-nine, we're adjourned.